Well, I'm glad you're saying that because I was getting ready to buy an Amazon refurbished.
Yeah, how about, yeah.
Not good, Paul?
Yeah, I can get the desktop, you know, the when it first comes on, but I can't get on to, it will not hook up to my Wi-Fi.
All right, everyone, is everybody ready to get started?
Yes.
Nova, is Nova there tonight or Christine?
Um, I'm here. Christine's here.
Okay. Okay, okay Christine. Alright, this time we're gonna call the meeting of April twenty, twentieth, twenty twenty to order. Councilmember Lenore, will you lead us into the pledge of allegiance?
Yeah. Salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, roll call please.
Councilmember Rizendez?
Present.
Mike O'Reilly Spencer?
Present.
Mayor Velasquez?
Here.
Councilmember Lenore?
Present.
Interim City Manager Miller?
Present.
City Attorney Epperson?
Here.
And the record will, oh. Intern place Chief Reynoso?
Here.
The agenda for the city of Hollister City Council regular meeting of April twentieth, twenty twenty was postponed on the voting board on April seventeenth, twenty twenty, at three forty-five P.M. for government code section five four nine by four point two.
Thank you. We're gonna move to the consent agenda. Are there any items council would like to pull?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull items A one and A six, please.
A one, A six. Okay, is there most, is there any speaker cards on any of these items, other items?
No, Mr. Mayor, I too was going to pull item A one.
I'm sorry?
I wanted to pull item A one as well.
Okay, alright, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda outside of item A, A one and A six. That we approve, excuse me.
I lost you there Carol, say it's A one, you pulled A one, A six, correct?
That's correct.
It looks like we lost audio, put them in the chamber, I can't hear anything on there either.
She's learning her math.
Hang on. I move that we approve the consent agenda outside of items one and six.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll take that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll go to item A one.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, A one, there was an error in F fifteen. While the staff request was to withdraw the HDA activities downtown, um, at this time, the actual minutes show that it was adopted, so I've since changed that to show withdrawn. So that is the correction on the April sixth minutes.
Thank you. Councilmember Resendez, you had a comment also?
Yeah, that was, um, one of my comments and then my other one I discussed with the city clerk as well. Uh, councilmember Richmond has said that he was absent. I'm just, um, wondering if it should at this point say that district floor vacant.
Yeah, we, we had an issue with our, um, agenda software company, we just got that fixed this week. So it now shows district floor as vacant and email markers shows up in the voting, so that should be taken care of on our next steps of minutes, starting with tonight.
Okay, thank you. Is there any speaker cards on this?
I have no speaker cards.
And is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we, um, adopt the minutes I've corrected. A one and A six.
Well, A six is not yet, but A one, is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we'll move to item A six. Mr. Resendez, you pulled this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, A six, I'm sorry. Um, yes, so I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm a major supporter of this event, I, I may, I'm, I don't know if scheduled to go, I'd love to see if it happened this year, I just think that right now it's a little bit too early to anticipate whether, we're in the middle of pandemic, we don't know if there can be a second wave of it, so I would just like to pull this item for now. Um, I'm glad that even the staff has everything filled out, so if and when we're ready to bring it back, I'd love to see it come back, but for right now, I think we need to, if there's already, hold that item and hold off on approving it.
Okay, is there any other questions on this item?
I'm, I'm, I, actually, I'm here, I'm agreeing with, uh, Councilmember Resendez on this, I'm kind, I was kind of surprised to see an event be placed on the agenda at this time. I think he's right as far as hopefully by October, we're free and clear of this, but I don't want to be in a situation where we're starting to approve other events right now as we have no clear picture of what's gonna be happening in the next few months.
Do we have any speaker cards on this or any other comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there a way to, um, we don't want to, well, it's kind of hard to date uncertain at this point. How can we handle this? Is Tuesday once we lift, uh, once we get out of the emergency or what would be your recommendation to city clerk for?
I would be forced that we just withdraw the item until a later time and that takes it off completely until we resubmit it.
Okay, so just a motion to withdraw the item?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Resendez, would you like to make a motion on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I'll make a motion to withdraw item A six from the agenda.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, thank you all, so we're gonna do item C, public input. Christine, is there something else you want to read on this or do you want me to read what we usually read out on this?
Um, if you could go ahead and read because I do have people in the public, uh, or in the council chambers today as well as online, I believe, so.
Great, thank you. Alright, this is a time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker's cards are available in the lobby, are to be completed and given to city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record and speak to the city council. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes per subject. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Okay, who are our speakers?
I have received written correspondence from John Freeman, Heather Hickerson, Steve Hickerson, Christina Soto and Bill Lee, who I believe is going to comment as well, so, um, my first speaker here in the public is Elliot Helenus.
Good evening. Title.
Brian.
Title two of the Hollister Municipal Code Administration Administrative and Personnel Chapters two point zero eight point six zero six zero, relations to city council. The city council and its members shall deal with the administrative services of the city only through the city manager except for the purposes of inquiring and neither the city council nor any member thereof shall give orders to any subordinate of the city manager. The city manager shall take his or her orders and instructions from the city council only when a duly held meeting of the city council and no individual city member. City council members shall give any orders or instructions to the city manager. Government Code Section three four nine zero three, the mayor is a member of the city council and has all the powers and duties as a member of the city council. Three six nine three six, resolutions and orders of payments of money and all ordinance require a money, uh, require, required majority vote and other membership by the city council. Three seven one zero zero, the legislative body may pass ordinances not in conflict with the constitution and the laws of the state and the, uh, the United States. Three seven one one, in addition to other powers, a legislative body may perform all acts necessary or proper to carry out provisions of this title. In an interview with Benito Link, Mayor Velasquez was quoted to state that he has employees currently working and it is okay for his employees to work because only they are able to do social distancing, however, when it comes to the city of Hollister and to the county and the county of San Benito, he claims that all construction sites, I don't care what you say, people will work next to each other. I believe he's being hypocritical in a, in an effort that he's stopping all construction of affordable housing in the city of Hollister as well as going with, with the county of San Benito while he himself is making money and abiding apparently by whatever laws he seems deemed for the county but not for himself or his company. I also request that, um, in a future agenda, you bring forward to postpone the motorcycle rally because I don't believe that it's been brought up before and I don't want to see any staff timer money uh, going towards a rally that's gonna, that needs to be postponed. Thank you.
Next speaker.
I don't see any of the attendees or anyone teleconferencing that may want to speak for public comment, please raise your hand. I have Bill Lee. Bill, go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen of the city council of Hollister, my name is Bill Lee. Some of you may know me as the founder of a national shirt company that employed roughly a hundred persons and was headquartered here in Hollister for nearly thirty years. Others may know me currently as the executive director of Martha's Kitchen. It's a Texas-based soup kitchen that provides a hundred thousand free meal, free meals each year to several Hollister's nonprofits. If it were not for the current COVID nineteen pandemic, I would be addressing you in person at tonight's meeting. I would like to see Councilwoman Honor Spencer appointed to the open position on the general plan advisory.
I'm sorry, I gotta hold you up there, that is an item on the agenda. That's not for public input, that, that would be later in the agenda.
Okay, I thought I had to speak now.
Yeah, that would be, I believe that's an item we're discussing down.
Let me try and explain that again, I'm sorry, Bill.
But it's, uh, later in the agenda.
Great, I have you.
Do we have any other speakers?
Is there anyone in the attendees that would like to speak on any item that is not on the agenda? If there is anything that is not on the agenda that you want to speak on, please raise your hand. I have Kevin Henderson.
Brian.
Uh, good evening, council. Um, I'm just, I'm here to, um, advocate for, uh, all the businesses that are currently shut down in this time. Um, it's getting, I know it's getting hard for a lot of people. I know the county has to do what it has to do to protect the health of the people. But I just, um, I just want to pose a couple of questions. The, in, um, when you go to the grocery store, it's very crowded, it's crowded in there, but everyone's practicing social distancing and then soon, you know, everyone's gonna be wearing masks. And so, social distancing either works or it doesn't. If social distancing works in a grocery store, then why can't it work in, in our, in our businesses that are considered non-essential now? So, I just wanted to pose that question. I think we need a little bit of balance. I mean, the, you know, we, you know, the mayor was giving a, a Facebook live and, you know, saying, oh, we have to stop the spread and, you know, we have to do this until, you know, the, it's completely gone. I don't think the virus is gonna disappear completely, we need to be realistic here. So, at some point, somebody's gonna have to say, it's time to go back to work. Someone needs to make that call. So, I mean, I understand that the county's gonna do what it's gonna do, but, I mean, use the city council, look out for your businesses. Advocate for them. It's, it's, you know, you should be the ones saying to the county, look, we're, we're suffering here. So, I'm just asking for a little bit of balance, a little bit of pushback. And, you know, mayor, you, you claim that you're a, a Republican. Why don't you stick it to the governor? You know, the governor's, you know, you know, advocating this huge shutdown. And, so I'm just, I'm asking that, you know, stand up for the people, let's not just go along with everything, let's have a little bit of pushback. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, we're gonna move to item D one, uh, report from city manager.
Nothing to report right now.
How about D two?
Uh, nothing, we have no items.
Okay, we're gonna move to item D one, public hearing.
Just one moment, please, it'll be, uh, city engineer desktop. Do I mention?
Uh, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. Um, uh, this item, uh, is, um, uh, related to, um, uh, introduction of an ordinance or, um, uh, removal of the authority of tentative map approvals from the planning commission, uh, and, um, having that, uh, those duties charged to the city council. On September third, uh, twenty nineteen, the city council adopted a resolution twenty nineteen dash two zero six directing staff to amend the city of Hollister Municipal Code to provide a procedure to remove the authority of tentative map approvals from the planning commission and charge those duties to the city of Hollister, uh, city council. Staff has prepared the necessary ordinance to amend the municipal code to accomplish that directive for city council consideration. If adopted, this new policy will provide the current city council as well as future city councils with the flexibility to designate either the planning commission as the approval authority of tentative maps or to reserve and return unto itself the city council all or portion of the powers and duties otherwise vested in our planning commission by simply adopting a resolution. Staff recommended city council read by title only, wait full reading and introduce an ordinance of the city of Hollister amending title sixteen subdivisions, title two administration and personnel and title seventeen zoning of the city of Hollister Municipal Code and direct staff to schedule a second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the May fourth, twenty twenty city council meeting.
Danny, can you hear me?
Yeah, if I can.
A quick question for you, I, I'm a little confused, I, I see the, uh, the item here saying that it removes the authority, the tentative maps from the planning commission to the city council, but I thought I heard you say that or it can go back to the planning commission, so which way is it?
Well, it, it, what, what will happen, the policy, um, will, um, it, the policy will be placed in, in the municipal code, um, and you will be able, uh, the city council will be able to, um, adopt a resolution to either, uh, have, um, the authority to approve tentative map placed with the city council or if the city council, current or future city councils were to change their mind, instead of going back through, um, the process of, um, amending, uh, the municipal code through, uh, ordinances, uh, you would, uh, simply just need to, uh, adopt a resolution. Uh, it's just for, uh, uh, ease of simplicity for, um, for processing.
What wasn't the whole intent was to make sure that the, that decision was gonna end up at the council rather than what was happening before, that was the idea, so why wouldn't we be doing it, uh, changing the code so it's permanent instead of going back and forth on it, because I can see in this case, it might end up where for a while it's one way and then it goes back to the other way, so the, the idea was that that final decision would rest on that city council rather than going back and forth, so it seems kind of, um, vague from what I heard you say, so I just want some more clarity on that.
Okay, and, and, and if that's the case, that, um, the city council, uh, would like that change to be made, uh, so that it's permanent and in the future, uh, if there is a, a different council and they want to change it and they want to go back through ordinance, that can be, that modification can be made and when we come back for the second reading, that change could be made.
So we can make that change today so that on the second reading, that's the way it would be then?
Yeah, I mean, if that, if that's the desire of the council, that's just the direction that you give me and I'd make that change.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted some clarity on that. Is there any other questions from council?
Yes.
Councilmember Lenore?
Uh, actually, I don't have any questions, I have comment, or do you want comments now or just questions?
Uh, I think questions now, then we could, uh, open it for public hearing.
Okay, okay, I'll hold my comment, I'll hold my comment, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Alright, this time we're gonna open in public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, this time we're gonna close the public hearings. Take it back to the council, Councilmember Lenore, you had a comment?
Uh, yes, I, I think I recall, uh, this was shortly after I got appointed under the council, I was pretty sure I voted no on that resolution. I think it was a four one vote. I'll just tell you this, that I was on the planning commission for six years and I worked in planning for thirty, thirty years. You really need the planning commission to have as much oversight on city projects as possible. You're condensing, you're condensing, you're condensing, you're gonna have less say, you're losing less say. Air, I've been watching it since I've been on here and you're losing and you're losing and you're losing. You really need those tentative maps to stay at the, at the council level, you know, nothing prohibits somebody from appealing an approval to the planning commission, to the city council to overturn, but I just don't like the fact that the planning commission is being circumvented. They're planners, I have a lot of respect for that process, so, um, yes, um, I'll be having to, uh, uh, not be able to endorse this to, just because I, I was on the planning commission and, um, I like, I like it the way it is, I think they're a good advisory board for the council and I really don't want to see any more politicizing the planning commission. It's been seeping in and seeping in and, and it wasn't like that when I was on there, but it's been seeping in and that makes me sad. Thank you very much.
Okay, I just forgot already on your comments, uh, are you talking about the tentative part of it or just the whole process, I didn't
Oh, just tentative maps.
Explaining it.
We're talking about tentative map approvals.
The tentative map approval, okay.
Yes.
Alright, any other questions or comments?
Yes.
From council?
Yes.
I can, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to weigh in.
Go ahead, Councilmember Resendez.
Uh, I, oh, okay, I had a hard time hearing you. Um, but, um, just going back, I don't remember, I had to call staff and ask about this, but if I remember correctly, um, this was brought up, um, and the, the intention was to give the council a little bit more authority over approve, like the final approval of tentative maps, and if I recall correctly, I, I don't remember what the vote was, but I did see we meant, like, and the majority of us wanted to see this, so I, I am pretty confused too and I've been going back and forth with staff all day over it because it seems like it's not very clear. If the intention was to, and staff, give the final approval process of tentative maps to the council, then that's what I'd like to see in front of us. Um, if in the future it changes, then, then it needs to be changed then, but I would see very much in favor of having it come back to the council. Um, as a question by the mayor, thank you.
I think at this point, if I understand Danny right, we can make the, the motion to include that language, so we're, on the second reading, it would be in the second reading, that would have that desired effect. Correct, Danny?
Um, yes, I believe so that, that, um, you, you know, you can direct me to change, um, uh, the ordinance such that I would take that provision out that would allow flexibility to, um, uh, the council to adopt a resolution to either place, uh, the authority with, uh, the planning commission or, um, to place it with, um, uh, the city council. Yes, you can direct me to remove that and when it come back for, uh, the, the second reading and the actual adoption of, um, the ordinance, that you could do it at that time.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments from council members? Is there, is there a motion to move it in that fashion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to adopt the, the ordinance with an amendment stating that the city council would get the final approval process on tentative maps. And that's ordinance number eleven eighty-nine.
Okay, alright. There's a motion, is there a second? I will second that, there's a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion does not carry? We're gonna move on to item F one.
Uh, mayor, can I request, if, uh, it's gonna probably be like this on any other future agendas also, but if it goes two two, it gets automatically moved over to the next agenda? Can I get a consensus to withdraw it from a future agenda?
That, that would be fine. Is there a, a consensus on that?
Yes.
Yes.
I agree, I agree with that.
Yeah, alright, thank you for that.
No, thank you.
We're gonna move to item F one?
So, um, we have the deputy director of Health and Human Services here to, uh, give a presentation on the homeless shelter. So I'll have Enrique, uh, give that presentation to the council.
Thank you very much, uh, city council members and members of the public. Uh, my name's Enrique Arriola, I am deputy director for Health and Human Services Agency uh, with the county of San Benito and I, purpose of this meeting is to give you an update on the home resource center and also to ask for a contribution for the operations of the year-round shelter. Uh, as you are aware, thank you. As I reported, uh, in, in the past, this is, I want to say my second or third, uh, uh, meeting that I've been before you making, uh, this type of request and I'm hoping that today there's a level of action. Uh, the, the Housing Opportunities Mills and Empowerment Resource Center, otherwise referred to the Home Resource Center, uh, held its grand opening in December of two thousand seventeen. And, uh, when we opened, we budgeted for the operating, uh, budget of six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, which we've, um, maintained around that, that range. And those funds were fund developed by, uh, our department or the county and I would also say that, that year towards the end of the first year, we came before, uh, the city council here and you did award a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the operations during year one, so that, uh, we are very thankful. It is in good use, it went towards the operations of, of the whole shelter. Uh, there's still a need for, uh, funding of, let me change this because I haven't done that.
Put the better, the remote around.
Oh, okay.
And then aim towards Christine.
Over there Enrique, there you go.
And you might want to see if it's on on the side. I'll do it for you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So, um, building the shelter is one thing and it took an enormous amount of effort. We fundraised about one point nine million dollars and, and we still need their support. Uh, it's, it's extremely difficult to fundraise every year six hundred and something thousand dollars, so a continued uh, support of the Uh, support of the shelter is very important. Uh, we have as the operator community, Homeless Solutions, uh, since they been managing the center back in two thousand seventeen. The Home Resource Center is the first ever year round emergency homeless shelter in San Benito County. Uh, the center wa- has a maximum of fifty beds, twenty-eight are earmarked for uh males and twenty-two for females. And on a daily basis, uh, all guests receive three meals per day. Uh, there's a bed provided to them. There's access to showers. Uh, there's also activities that are planned. Uh, there are supportive services. There's partnerships with uh different organizations. Uh, there's a security provided uh for the safety of everyone. And there's also access to a laundry room and there's also a kitchen available for prepping food and warming up meals. The, just the, here going back to, to this one. Actually, you can move on to the next one. It also has the figures. So this is a diagram. The bottom portion, uh, light pink is the shelter. Uh, we, as I said, it, it costs a one point nine million dollars. The uh, and that's what we consider phase one. Phase two is one point five uh million dollars what it took. It's been completed. We. Held the grand opening back in May of two thousand nineteen. Uh, there's a computer lab, there's a conference room for workshops. And there's offices for the social workers to do intensive case management. So there's a, a lot of activity going on. On a daily basis. Uh, the pa- back piece, the yellow portion is the. Um, it's dedicated towards small units, two hundred square feet. Our goal is to get about four to, I'm sorry, six to eight units. This uh went to bid, bidding and I believe there's some contractors that bid for it, so we're still in the process of making this happen and we hope that. This time next year, even before that, this uh phase three gets completed. Uh, on next slide, I wanted just to give a quick update of the work that it, that goes on on a daily basis. So this is the uh. Monthly attendance report for two thousand nineteen. So as you could see, the average daily attendance. Is forty-four point two seven. So forty-four homeless individuals that would otherwise. Be out in the streets, sleep out in the streets, be at the parks, roam around during, in the evening times and the weekends. So we facilitate this, this shelter to allow them to be at a place where they're gonna be safe. Uh, we served over a hundred uh unduplicated clients in two thousand nineteen. Uh, for total of duplicated guests, thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty-seven. So. We provided a lot of uh individuals with nightly uh beds uh for them to remain there throughout the year. There's a total meals provided thirty-six thousand two hundred and sixteen, which is quite substantial. Uh, this is enorm- enormous undertaking for the staff at Community Homeless Solutions to plan for this, for. Community based organizations, for churches, for community volunteers that sponsor meals. We depend on many organizations and residents for helping with meals uh. To, to feed our homeless individuals that matter to all of us. There's about seventy or so individuals from two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen that have been. Successful in obtaining housing and a little over fifty obtained employment. Next slide. So I wanted to give you a glimpse of the bod- budget for two thousand eighteen. So in two thousand eighteen. We applied our two thousand sixteen C D B G allocation of two hundred thousand dollars for the operations. We also received an emergency solutions grant in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. This is the year that the city Hollister contributed a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And we also covered our gap funding a hu- of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars that the. San Benito County H H S A contributed for a total of six hundred and seventeen thousand. Next slide. So in two thousand nineteen, we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars secured by a. Uh, grant, uh, continuing of care grant, a hundred and fifty thousand. And the county contributed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that year of around six hundred thousand dollars that we've budgeted. And uh, next slide. So this come, come around this year, we're, we've been very active in fund developing for this year and the years to come. So we're in the process right now of completing and submitting the C D B G twenty twenty application that is due June the first. Uh, we did submit a homeless housing assistance and prevention program in February two thousand nineteen. Uh, a few weeks ago, we did receive notification from the state of being funded and. Uh, the contract is being moved forward for board approval, so hopefully we have access to those funds. Uh, we applied for two hundred, I want to say two hundred and fifty thousand or so, which we will apply towards a two-year period. So we would have access at least for half of that this year. And uh, Community Homeless uh Solutions applied for a grant that's cash, Ca- California Emergency Solutions Grant. Of a hundred and fifty thousand, which uh has been secured. So. Uh, so we've been uh active and right now our need is about four fifty. So I am. Uh, wi- with getting uh. The homeless housing assistance and prevention program will be a lot closer to that. And if uh city council does approve uh funding, then we would be like almost uh at even. Uh, next slide please. So here, I just wanted to, the things that have been happening in, in the spirit of partnership. To continue to collaborate with the city that happens uh with the school districts, uh San Juan Batista. We hold. Uh, every other month, we hold uh local partners meetings and there are city reps that does show up. From San Juan Batista, nonprofit organizations, county departments. So I think that's important to continue so that we all understand the different services that are being provided. Um, I think it's also important to the city uh prioritize uh future C D B G funds and that is happening, so I'm very, very grateful. Uh, City Hollister is submitting uh the public service application of C D B G and. Two hundred thousand dollars or two fifty is being uh earmarked for that. So if funded, uh, next year, hopefully those, those funds will come forth. And we also feel that there's a need for day services. Uh, right now, there's no day services provided. So I think having that resource, it'll help our homeless population, our homeless community be engaged also during the, the day hours. And also for San Benito County to continue to pro- be proactive in fund developments, which we're always consistently working on fund developing. Not only for the, the operations, but other homeless related services. Um, and just to maintain active engagement uh in the homeless planning committee. And again, thank you very much for your support and with a hundred and thirty thousand dollars uh a couple of years ago, and I'm hoping that. Our request of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is approved by the city council. And, and my goal is, is to be whole funded, but also to continue operations as we are. And if. Someday in the future, we have even more funds, we could do a twenty-four seven. Right now, it's only between the hours of four P M and eight A M. However, because of the uh, of, of COVID nineteen and shelter in place, right now, we're. Twenty-four hours a day and we'll continue to do so until, until the order is fully lifted. Uh, next slide. So that concludes it. I, I, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you for the update, Enrique. Is there any questions from council?
Yes.
Go ahead, councilmember Lenore?
Thank you. Hi Enrique.
Hello.
I'm glad you're here tonight.
I'm glad to be here.
Had a lot of soul surgery in the last few months on, on this issue. Um, I've come to the realization that we have to do something. I want to know about day services because I have ulterior motive for approving this money. I'll just be honest. Not only, not just that I want to help the homeless, but I got a big issue in my district. In my district, I have Dun Park, Park Hill, Calaveras and downtown. I will have to oversee all that. And I don't like what I'm seeing for a very long time now, so I want to know. When you said, I think. That it may help the day services might help, uh, what do you really think that? Is it gonna help me? And will I have more teeth if we get your program up and going and you add day services and you add eight transitional. Uh, trailers there? Uh, do I have, maybe you can answer this and maybe I'll direct it to Brett. Does that give me a little more? Say so about having somebody vacated from, let's say, Dun Park? Do you know?
What, what I could say is that this is a, a solution that requires full partnership. Uh, the county itself uh requires additional partnerships such as the city. If we had day services, what that'll mean, I think in practicality, is we'll have fifty. Homeless individuals that remain. The goal is for them to remain at the shelter. Uh, right now, this is how we, we are operating because of the shelter in place. So if we, once it gets lifted, we're gonna go back to our. System that we've incorporated for the last uh two and a half years, which is at eight A M. They get transported back to different areas within the city Hollister. Uh, in the evening at four o'clock or so, they get picked up. So that to me makes sense uh for, for our homeless community at the shelter, up to fifty. To remain at the shelter, being in an environment that's structured. With supportive staff, supportive services, being engaged. That to me makes sense. And not only that, it enhances their. Health and well-being and they have, they will have the opportunity to be more sober uh for those that have some issues. Uh, linking them to services and for staff to continue to work with them so that they could be more employable, have different workshops, different training. So. That is, in my opinion, would help a lot as far as continuing to address. Other needs in our community. I'd say we should continue this dialogue.
Well, um, I agree with you a hundred and ten percent. Uh, and maybe it's out of your control what I'm talking about, but I am concerned when they're dropped off. Here, if you could not drop them off in the city parks, I don't know where you drop them off. Maybe I should find out. But absolutely, they should never be dropped off or picked up from the city park. It's just a magnet. It's a magnet.
Yeah.
And we're dying out here in our parks. We cannot have, uh, I'm not gonna get too hard on you, but please, it's a dire situation. Um, I'm, I'm hoping that we'll do some more day services. And you're right, it would be good to retain the ones that are doing well. And I'll have future talks with my ci- interim city manager about, we have an issue in the parks and we would like to partner with the county. To somehow help us uh with day services. And I know the mayor's worked on uh some uh projects with you. We really gotta, don't, don't lose sight of that because we're, we're not, we're gonna have homeless all the time where they. Are not really getting the best of care. You're correct. So um, have a lot of, I have a lot of empathy for the homeless and, but I also have a lot of empathy for folks that are. Having to live with homeless across the street in their park. And it's not vacating. It gets better, gets not good, then it's good. So that's one of the reasons that I'm looking forward to working with the county on the homeless shelter. Uh, at the time, the length of the time I'm, I'm on here, but um, let's try to do some day services and. And, and see what we can do for the folks that you're not getting.
Yeah.
You're not getting and they're in the river.
Yep.
We gotta do something to work on that.
Uh, ab- absolutely. If I could just say real quick, Elizabeth King is here and I think she's gonna make some comments and she could address the uh. Drop offs.
Okay.
But I know we've addressed it before and my understanding is that no longer they're, they're dropped off at Dun Park.
Okay. And then my last comment uh is that I would respectfully request, very respectfully request, that the. That the county through their board supervisors budget some funds. Uh, general fund dollars or whatever you want to use to come out of their budget since the city of Hollister residents are now going to pay. Uh, maybe uh two hundred and fifty thousand. I'd like to see the county uh chip in as well if they need to budget for it. I understand that. I would only obligate myself for this one time because I don't want to speak for the next person that comes along. But I, I would highly, I would really like to see the county um also pay money. And I know you do a lot of in-kind. But uh, money, money talks and takes money to run that shelter. So that would be a good partnership. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Is that, thank you, Carol. Very good comments. And thank you for those comments. Are there any other uh comments from the council?
I have a question and a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, councilmember send us.
Thank you. Enrique, hello. I, I noticed during your presentation that the city did not partner with you in two thousand nineteen. Why, why was there not any money allocated back then? Is that a specific reason?
I came before the city council. I don't remember the exact date, maybe in September-ish, October or so. Um, and it. There was no action taken. I came back a couple of months later and the same no action. Uh, for one reason to another, we find ourselves uh, you know, April and we're still trying to get your support.
But you weren't at the last meeting.
Well, prior to that, I had requested to be here and two numerous times and I was not scheduled after I was told I would be.
Thank you, Enrique. And then lastly, I just, I mean, I just want to applaud all the work that you guys have been doing. I've thought about that multiple times.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's. I think now, especially now, we have an obligation to, to provide for the most vulnerable of our population, you know, the children, senior citizens and the homeless. So I'm glad to see that uh this ordinance be before and I definitely would be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Enrique?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you to you and the staff and everyone that's made this thing such a success. It's, it's a model. On the Central Coast and several other people have come to visit. Some great things are happening here. As with all centers, it's, it's tough to make it perfect. But really, you guys have done an incredible job. And I, I. Can't thank you enough for sticking with it and for everybody that's making this work here. Maybe I could ask uh one, one favor while we're talking about this and maybe something you can bring back to um. Your board, but you know, the, the driving force originally behind this whole thing was Jim Riedinger. I hope someday. We can honor him with the name, his name on, on that building somewhere. So I just, again, thank you for everything you guys have done.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment, um, Mayor Gnoce- uh, Velazquez, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um.
Counselor, bye. Counselor.
Good one. Um, Enrique, I do, uh, this, I am whole, so happy that you guys have done this for the homeless. Um, but I am going, I have a concern about the amount of money. Um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be allocated right now is a lot of money. We are in a, a health crisis. Uh, this community, especially our small businesses and other people in our community are going to need help too. I'm actually gonna take the words. They are not word for word, but on our April sixth meeting. Mayor Velazquez stated that he was not giving any money to any nonprofits. Because we need to keep every penny that we could get our hands on because we're gonna need it when this is over. Um, I want to support you, but not at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not, not now. We just really need to look at the future. I understand your program is an amazing one, but we are going to be in a cri- some kind of a crisis after this crisis is lifted. And I think we really need to think about everybody, just not the homeless. We need to think about small businesses. We need to think about everybody in San Benito County and Hollister. Um, I just have a problem with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Just for clarity, so we're, we're clear on my uh comment. You, we're talking about giving money to nonprofit groups as in the past. You probably weren't there at the time where money was just put out to different groups. All were the causes. We now provide money for Hoben and San Antonio, a very important group that helps our seniors. Which is critically important. And our homeless situation that helps our homeless is critically important. They have a budget they have to meet each year to keep these operations going, to feed our seniors and to house our homeless. This is more of a direct cost and you can imagine what the cost would be.
Yep.
Without these facilities. So my comment is not about. Not supporting, it's about making sure we're putting dollars on these items that make a huge difference, very, very important difference. Not that we don't want to help some of the other groups, but this is completely different. So thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I can make my final comment. I just wanted to say. Yeah, I can make my final comment. I just wanted to say um that this is an enormous undertaking that we took. Uh, the Community Homeless Solutions has been a true champion in being an effective organization with a lot of experience. I do wanna say, I don't see it as, I mean, asking for money and contributing to us. I think it's a partnership. We cannot do this ourselves. It's, it has to be a partnership and that's the cost of doing business. It costs six hundred plus and, and, and their staff, pretty, you know, several staff on each shift, there's security all year long. I mean, there's a lot of expenses. But I wanted just to uh let you know that we're doing a lot of good. Community Homeless Solutions is doing an excellent job. And if we're to take a drive right now, you'll see a lot of happy people. They're eating, they're safe, they're gonna sleep in a warm bed tonight. So I just wanted to make a couple of comments and also to thank you in advance. We hope that this contribution is made, uh hopefully annually in, in that amount uh for future years. So thank you.
Thank you, Enrique. And that's exactly, this, this and Hoben and San Antonio should just be part of our budget because they are the partnerships we need to keep, as I said, our, our seniors taken care of and our homeless uh sheltered. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Do we have any comment cards? Christine?
I have no comment cards, but it looks like Elia would like to speak.
I just have a question for Enrique. Um, can you tell us how much the county, is there an equal uh amount coming from the county as well? That's the only question I have. Thank you.
Annually, the county has fund developed hundreds and thousands of dollars towards the operations. Uh, we've been successful year one, I show the funding allocations for the different categories. Uh, right now, we've secured at least two hundred thousand dollars. We're waiting for the contracts. Every year, we fund develop for many, many years. We fundraised one point four million dollars for uh phase two of the facility. We've uh received recently a one point six one million dollars for uh housing for homeless individuals, for permanent housing and transitional housing. We received a one point one million dollars from Heap, uh actually one point eight six dollars of which one point one is being de- dedicated for uh transitional housing and the remainder for rental assistance and other supportive services. So if I look at my annual budget right now for homeless services with this capital projects, we're talking about three million dollars or more. And that includes uh funding for operations. So we, we as a staff dedicate time, energy uh towards planning, towards fund developing, towards addressing our homeless uh needs in our community because we feel it's important.
Thank you, Enrique. Okay. No other comments?
I have one more, Elizabeth King.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth King. I serve as the program coordinator at the Home Resource Center here in Hollister, California. As um the director Enrique Ariola um mentioned, we are serving around the clock presently due to COVID and shelter in place. Effective March seventeenth, we went twenty-four hours, seven days a week, which increased the need for our staff. We do have two staff members per shift, three shifts, as well as a floater between four and eight, along with security seven days a week now where the need was a lot less for staff. We also have an increased uh meal plan. We went from just supplying dinner and a snack and carrying them away with well wishes and a lunch on their way out at eight AM. Um, where now, thanks to Martha's Kitchen and different partnerships and the different dignitaries and giving community members, we are given um a lot of assistance in serving. We are serving three square meals, two snacks. We do provide them their showers, their laundry services, their access to the kitchen. Um, there's a lot of need. I was focusing on the numbers that um Enrique shared. He did share a graphic that stated that in two thousand and nineteen fifteen individuals were able to find employment in the count of around fifty. And you had asked what the impact is right now with our twenty-four hours, seven day a week care. Uh, I'd like to share that just in the, these recent weeks, we were able to help five individuals find employment uh at this point in time. Two were able to find housing. And I strongly believe um that, I mean, that alone is we're, we're hitting great heights. We're able to dedicate more time, more one-on-one time. We're able to go from just providing a service, but we're also helping with transitional care. There's more attention, there's more one-on-one encouragement. There's a lot of time right now that allows for us to sit down with each and every guest to find out what their plans are and what their goals are, which we weren't able to do between four thirty PM into the eight o'clock morning where we were sending them off to day services. Um, and that's very impactful. I have twenty-eight seconds, so I will answer your question as to where we're dropping off and picking up. As of right now, we are not picking up and dropping off. We are encouraging no exit. Um, but prior to SIP, we were driving individuals into town at drop-off locations in front of The Straw Hat, in front of uh Baylor Market. And um we were doing pickups at Linda Lampis.
May she continue, Mayor?
Say again, please?
May, may she continue, please? She's almost done.
She's almost done. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. So I do believe strongly based on the different growth, impactful growth that has happened with all the hands-on care, that the additional funding will make a difference, not just for the fifty existing, but it will be the ripple in the great wave that we're trying to make to improve our homelessness, which would eliminate individual by individual. As we start impacting lives, I strongly believe that people at the river and people at the park will see that growth and will be encouraged to come to the Home Resource Center. And I'm very grateful for the time that I was given to speak. And I'm very grateful for the different partnerships that we have. And I'm completely humbled to serve at Community Homeless Solutions here in, in, in our town. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Uh, excuse me, uh, just a second. Uh, so just clarify, they're not going to the parks?
No, ma'am.
All right. So just Baylor Market and Straw Hat?
Correct.
They do congregate there.
Cricket. Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. And I really appreciate everything. Don't get me wrong, all right? I'm just concerned about the parks.
Yes, ma'am.
And downtown. Thank you. Thank you.
Council, Councilmember Lurie, I did wanna answer, I think one of those, those points you're making is very valid concerning is some of the people at the park, well, I would say most of the people that do hang around the park do not go to the shelter.
Right.
Um, for different reasons. Just so you're aware of that.
I'm very aware of that. Very aware of that. Thank you.
Is there any more comments?
I have one more.
Councilmember, send us.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just, I totally reiterate that we're in the middle of a public health crisis and for us to try to rationalize lowering the amount of money, it's just gonna contribute to, to the crisis at hand. These people, they need somewhere safe to go, they need somewhere clean to go. And enough to mention that we live, you know, right next to the Silicon Valley where it's one of the most expensive places to live. Uh, we do have a lot of homelessness and we do have a lot of people that are working hard to try to resolve those issues. But if we don't provide them these services and if we don't help to continue to support these services financially, we're gonna have a much bigger problem on our hands than what we're seeing now. Um, so I just, I can't wrap my head around trying to rationalize supporting businesses over the public health, you know, being of human beings. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. At this point, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash seventy-seven approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to San Bernardino Health and Human Services for the Homeless Resource Center.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I will take that motion.
Is the motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Against? Sorry. Was that a four oh?
Yes.
Yes, that was.
Four oh. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. We're gonna move to item F two.
Sorry, just no visiting.
Um, that's gonna be Kathleen Gallagher, yes.
No problem.
Speak on that. So Kathleen, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Kathleen Gallagher. Can you hear me?
Hi, Kathleen.
Excellent. How are you? Um, I hope everyone is well through this challenging time. Um, I wanted to, uh, would you, good evening. I'm, I, I know most of, uh, we have, I've met most of you. Integrated Waste Management, uh, manager for Hollister San Juan in the county. As you might recall, Hollister is a member of a regional agency and a joint powers authority. Um, and joined together with San Juan and the county to cost effectively meet state mandates for solid waste, organics and household hazardous waste. So um Colonel Mini is also on the line um on the Zoom call. If uh you have um additional as the regional controller for Recology. Um, your agenda packet, a packet included the staff report, uh, a, a public notice, a resolution and a PowerPoint. And uh I wanted to briefly go through the, the PowerPoint and, um, and answer any questions that the mayor and council members had. Um, so Christine, I uh don't know if you have the, I have the PowerPoint and agenda, but I don't see it there on your screen.
Give me just a moment, please.
Sure, thanks. And, and uh maybe for the sake of time, I can just start if that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Do I have to?
Perfect. Thank you, Christine. Um, so similar to prior years, the recommendation before the council tonight is to approve the resolution uh to issue a Proposition two eighteen public hearing notice uh about the solid waste rates that are effective on July first, twenty twenty. Um, as a quick reminder, the Hollister City Council approved the franchise agreement that was awarded through Recology in twenty nineteen after a com- competitive procurement. And that franchise agreement included a detailed provision about that annual rate adjustment. Um, that public hearing notice is in your agenda packet. Um, on the second slide, if you see that the um screen. My screen is, is off a bit. Um, on the second, on the second slide, um, some quick background on the rates that are paid to Recology. Um, the franchise again, uh, agreement that was approved included that detailed methodology in section E, and it does explain how Recology can adjust their rates annually. And again, Colonel Mini, uh, the controller is happy to answer any additional questions. Um, the collection rates pay for the operating costs such as the Recology's drivers and customer service, processing costs to collect and dispose of the garbage at the John Smith landfill, cost to collect and process organics and recycling. Um, the programs in the franchise agreement were developed to assist Hollister and San Juan in the county to meet state mandates. Um, most state mandates for solid waste, organics and household hazardous waste have uh increased in complexity and in number. Um, the public notice includes this information um that will be available to all Hollister residents and, and business and businesses. On the third slide, um, regarding Proposition two eighteen, um, at the public hearing, the city council, and we have uh looked to schedule this for June fifteenth, the council um would accept public comment regarding this rate increase. And then if at the conclusion of the public hearing, a majority protest of property owners does not exist, the council would adopt the maximum allowable uh charges as approved in the franchise agreement. Um, one quick note that while the courts have not yet ruled on Proposition two eighteen and whether they apply to solid waste rates, um, it was in an abundance of caution that the city as well as San Juan and the county are following the majority protest proceeding set forth in Proposition two eighteen. Um, so again, if the majority protest is received, the council would not be able to increase rates. But if the rates will, uh, but if there is no majority uh protest, uh, the solid waste rates would increase. And on the fourth slide, um, the Hollister City Council approved the Recology franchise agreement in twenty eighteen. Um, and as you know, it includes several program uh improvements to meet the state mandates. Um, the franchise agreement includes a provision that provides Recology with the annual rate adjustment. And about it affects the solid waste rates. The annual rates are based on the Consumer Price Index and the Fuel Index. We can go into that in a minute. Um, those are the primary factors. And then there's also, um, there's also the disposal and processing costs. Um, again, this is all detailed in the franchise agreement. On the fifth slide, um, just to bring this into the, from the hypothetical to the, to the actual, um, the rate adjustment is four point five percent and that would be effective July first of twenty twenty. Um, most of Hollister residents have a thirty-two gallon container or smaller. And it's about sixty-three, sixty-four percent of Hollister residents have those sized containers. So to give the council an idea of what that would look like, the new rate for a thirty-two gallon container would be thirty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents, which is a one dollar and forty cents per month increase. And then for residents with a twenty gallon container, uh, the new rate is twenty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents, which is an increase of one dollar and fourteen cents per month. Um, the public notice includes tables um that include all sizes. And those tables uh on the public notice look like this on slide six, if you can see. Um, so again, a quick example for Hollister, um, with a thirty-two gallon container, um, wanted to simply give you an example of what that doll, what that dollar and forty cents would break into in terms of operating costs. Please let me know if this is too much detail. Um, and, and I can certainly move over this, but I wanted to just give an example of what this looks like. Um, that dollar, that dollar forty pers- one dollar and forty cents uh of that increase really breaks into three main categories. Um, for example, um, eighty-one cents of that increase co- simply covers the operating expenses like wages and benefits, uh, fuel and maintenance. Um, those are related directly to the indexes that are in the franchise agreement like the CPI and the Fuel Index. Um, one dollar and forty cents, forty-seven cents is to cover increases in recycling processing fees um and disposal fees. Uh, one thing to note uh about the China has implemented a Chinese national sword which requires basically no contamination, meaning things that are not in, that are not supposed to be in the recycling have to get removed. And they have become extremely strict on contamination. We're working closely with Recology to uh educate, do a lot of public education around contamination. Um, the, the intent is to try and uh get our recyclables as clean as possible so it could possibly reduce our processing costs. Um, and then there was a, um, a eighty-eight cents is a reduction in rates that is as a result of Recology, Recology's diversion rates, results they didn't meet their requirement there for. Um, there was some liquidated damages and that has actually helped offset some of these rate costs. Um, and then real quickly, um, the annual rate adjustment, this is what the annual rates look like um with the CPI and the Fuel Index. Um, this is where the rates, uh, the components that are charged and where the four point five percent increase uh comes from. And I'm And I'm happy to go into this in detail if you would prefer. I did want to say one note, that for Recology, um, they are helping businesses um, during this challenging time regarding COVID nineteen by suspending service upon request. So if a business calls Recology because their business is closed, um, they would simply need to contact Recology and ask them to suspend their service and not, not have their business rebuilt. Um, Recology is continuing to provide service, um, to customers. They are not, they are not stopping service due to a non, a no payment. And then as always, Recology is providing this lifeline service, uh, which is reduced rates for low-income people. Carl Minnie is on the line. If, um, the mayor and city council have, uh, questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Does the council have questions?
I, uh, I'll wait until after. I, I don't have any questions.
Till after, I'm sorry?
I'll, I'll wait till the public hearing, after?
Oh, the June fifteen public hearing?
I don't, no, 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 the, t- tonight. Uh, go ahead, Mayor, I have no comments, right now.
No, I, uh, here's, the comment I have is, we're like, we're talking about CPI and the C of four point five, but the CPI is one point five. You remember last year, I wasn't very happy about these increases so quickly. And I'm not happy seeing a, a four point five increase either, again. So, these are the same questions or concerns I had from last year.
Thanks.
That's my comment.
I'll, I'll comment now then.
Go ahead.
I, I, I don't take increases lightly, I gave it a lot of thought. There is one area, I thought, I thought that the commercial multifamily bin went up considerably at twelve eighty-nine. I don't struggle so much with a single-family dwelling having incurring a dollar forty more a month. And I'll tell you why. I'm really proud of the Integrated Waste Department and the measures that they've been incorporating for the last several years. These folks have done an incredible job in, in the way of recycling. The electronics is free, uh, the re, there's so much free dumping now at the, at the county dump, that they didn't used to have that. Uh, then again, they do have to go to all the extra efforts of cleaning that and re- recycling up. It, it's a big operation. They have a lot of federal mandates running a dump. I know it's a little bit hard to talk about an increase right now, um, but a buck forty, I don't think is gonna break anybody, and it's really going towards good things, because they do a fantastic job. You have curbside pickup, they never used to do that, you put out a bulky item. They take bulky items, hazardous items, electronics, and they don't charge you anything. You take them, they, you know, there's a lot of services maybe you're not aware of. So, I feel like I wouldn't mind the small increase. I've been struggling with the, uh, the bin size, uh, that last bin size. I don't know if there's any room to wiggle there. Uh, but I, I, I think things go up in price. We live in a society that is always going up, and, you know, it's expensive to provide services. Uh, uh, there's a lot of things that come with services. And you're talking about people, employees, benefits, it's not just doing the job, it's the cost that it's costed to do the job. So tho- those are my comments, and, um, uh, I would probably, uh, based on what anybody else says, I'll, I'll see. I'm considering it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lloris. Any other questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, cr- um... Kathleen, is there?
Yes.
I'm sorry, um. I do have a problem raising rates, especially right now. Is there any way that your company could not raise the rates this year, and we can visit this next year? Um, I just find it very hard to start raising rates when people are out of work. A dollar forty might not be a lot, but it could mean, it could mean the difference between a can of soup to somebody. I would just hope that Recology would not raise the rates this year, and we could revisit it next year. Thank you.
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Resendez?
Thank you. Um, I am not a fan of raising rates either. I made this pretty clear last year, the hype was very high.
Yeah.
Um, I, I do have to say, and I, and I'm not, I'm, I'm not one to walk on issues, I gotta be honest with you. Um, but I did find so, and think, and seen that the customer could protest it. Um, and even though they could protest it at that time when there was not a pandemic, we did not have a lot of people, or we didn't meet the amount to protest. So, I, I share the same concerns, um, that have been brought up tonight. This, we're in the middle of a pandemic. Is there anything else you guys can do to help the customer out and the public at large out at this time? I had a conversation with the city manager about it. I understand that, you know, if we do not approve this, we can be in breach of contract, that does concern me. Um, and again, I hate to walk on issues. I wasn't there when this was approved in the beginning, but I just don't, I can't find it in myself to hike any amount in the middle of a pandemic and put a more of a burden on the public right now. Um, that, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Resendez.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one speaker from the audience.
Let's, I was gonna have Kathleen to answer any of the questions first, before we take the audience.
Thank you.
Sure, and, um, I, I certainly appreciate the, the concerns, and, and I have them as well. And I just want to clarify, I wasn't, it wasn't clear if, if the council member was thinking I was with Recology. I am not with Recology. I am, um, Integrated Waste Management Manager of each APA. So I just wanted to clarify, Carl Minnie, who is the controller for Recology, could, uh, perhaps respond to some of your questions, but I did want to just revisit something that council member, um, Resendez said, and, and, um, council member, um, Spencer, is, um, because this is a, an agreement, a contract that City of Hollister signed with Recology, uh, the, the annual adjustment is what, what the council agreed to. Um, so it is discretionary increase, it is an increase to pay for the costs that are clearly outlined in the franchise agreement. I know it's not the answer you want, but that is, i- it is a contractual agreement, and it's not a discretionary cost. These are the costs to pay for Recology's drivers and to dispose of the waste and, um, i- it's, and process materials. It's, it's not a discretionary cost.
Kathleen, thank you for clarifying that you're not employed. I think a lot of times people that were not involved early on don't know that, and I do appreciate all the hard work you did do to make this, all the parties have tried to work together. I have my concerns of state of the past. It's clear that there is a contract that's been signed, and as Councilor Resendez pointed out, there is an option of the homeowners protesting and fifty percent plus changes the, the increase, so. But it, as I all mentioned before, it would be great if Recology could do something, especially at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And Carl Minnie, if you're on the line, if it's agreeable, perhaps he can respond to some of the, I, I, some of the many things that he is doing. I went over that fairly quickly, but if that's agreeable to the mayor and the council for, for him to respond to some of these questions, I, I have emailed him, I know he's on the line, so.
Ye- yes.
If that was agreeable.
Absolutely, thank you.
Carl, if you're on the line? He, he, let me just, I'm sorry, I know this technology is a little...
Carl, go ahead.
Carl, so Carl Minnie is, like I said, the regional controller for Recology. Um, he had registered, um, thanks to Christine and Daisy for providing us, uh, to raise his hand, but I, it looks like he's not responding to the questions.
His hand's raised. Carl, you need to unmute yourself?
What's that?
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Oh, perfect.
We can hear you now. Thank you, sir. Go ahead. Carl, go ahead and speak.
Carl?
Tell them, yeah.
Carl, go ahead.
Carl, you need to unmute yourself and go ahead.
All right, why don't we take the comment from the, uh, audience?
Elliot, you can leave it?
Good evening. If anybody's gonna remember, it'll obviously be, um, Mayor Velasquez that'll remember that I've been advocating against Recology from the very beginning. I voiced my opinion every time I had the opportunity to come up here before the council members. And, uh, it was noted at the time, or I made a statement at the time, that Recology was known to when they, soon as they got a contract, they would come back and they would increase their, increase their prices. They said, no, it was not true, and it's happened, this is the... Hello?
Yeah, hold on for a second, Carl. Hang on for a second.
Do you want me to continue?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, anyway, um, like I was saying, uh, Recology has a history, and they, they sold themselves saying that they had reduced the prices. They reduced the prices for residential, but they increased the prices for businesses. And it looked great, they, unfortunately, the city got into the contract. I was against the contract, I was against the contract for the county to get it, they got it. And now they've come back a second time. The last time they came forward, I think maybe this is the third time, maybe this is that, that they've asked for a raise? If I, my math is correct, they are now at forty-two point six percent higher. They have increased their rate by forty-two point six percent from when the contract was drafted. I can assure you that Recology's employees are not getting a four point five rate increase in their salary per year, and that they're coming back into this saying, oh, well, it's only four point five percent. Well, it's four point five percent plus the thirty-eight point one percent that it was before, that, uh, that it totaled up. I have had meetings with Recology myself, personally gone to their office and said they've discussed this with them. This is not the time they can, Recology can, at this time, place a stay for any pay rate increase. It's not because it's contractual, but they themselves can put the contract and stay at the price that it's at, and maybe they can come back next year. Because this economy that we're in right now, with a lot of people not being able to afford a dollar forty more per month, is going to really hurt their pockets. Now, we were just talking about giving money to the homeless. This economy that we're about to hit, this recession we're about to hit, is gonna put more people in those food lines, at the harvest, uh, bank, food bank, and with the homeless people. I request Recology to reconsider and put yourself in a stay. If not, we will advocate to get more than fifty percent under the Prop two eighteen to reject this increase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Carl, can you, can you speak? Can we hear you? Can you, uh, try to speak again, please? Carl, you're on the line there for a second.
Look, sir, may I make up for that?
Go ahead, Mr. Resendez. We can hear you now, go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. I have a little technical difficulty with my, my computer. So, I, I definitely appreciate everybody's concern with the timing of, of when this rate increase is getting notified, and then going into place, uh, would be July.
Okay, Carl? Velasquez, again.
Carl, I can't hear you.
Uh, I was gonna suggest, Mr. Mayor, if we can...
Go ahead, Councilor.
I, first of all, I wanna state my position. I understand we're under a contractual obligation, and I am not in a position to put our city in any type of a liability at, at this point. I also want to make it clear that I don't necessarily agree hundred percent with hype with, uh, the hype right now. What I would suggest is, if we can get a clear answer from Recology and bring it back, um, at a date certain, and, um, hopefully we can get, find some type of leeway in the contract to give the, the customer a break at this time.
Councilor Resendez, I think that's a, a good idea. Uh, I think at this point, you know, we hear a lot of different numbers bouncing around. I do remember that when this was being negotiated with the ad hoc committees, I was not a member of it, but I do remember the presentation by Kathleen, she can help remind us that Recology was the lowest bidder, and whether it'd been Recology or somebody else, we'd be having the same conversation about these increases, because that was part of the, the contract. I didn't like that part of the contract, but here we are, and I think your recommendation is a good recommendation.
And, Mr. Mayor, I may...
Is Carl back on?
Uh, Mayor, the, Kathleen wants to speak.
Oh, and Mr. Mayor, uh, uh, sorry, it sounds like Carl may be coming through. Um, you are exactly correct, uh, that Recology, when we did the competitive procurement, uh, and the, the new contract started November first of twenty eighteen, Recology was the lowest bidder. Of the two other proposers, they, they were more, they were more expensive. Um, their proposals were more expensive, and that base rate that they proposed is the rate that they have to be held to for the ten-year contract. Um, and to the methodology is, is that Recology follows, um, is following the methodology that's written in the franchise agreement. I just wanted to clarify that point.
May- maybe you could explain that, that agreement, you, how it was involved, and it wasn't something that, again, not to, uh, justify the rate hike here, but it wasn't something they slipped in somehow and nobody noticed. This was, again, part of the bids from all of them. And I remember all that work that everybody did on that.
Yeah, and thank you. And very quickly, um, we had formed a, an ad hoc committee, um, and, uh, former member, uh, Ray Friend, uh, and, um, Carson Clower were on the franchise committee, as well as two other electives from the count, from the San Juan as, as the count, and went into excruciating detail about programs and state mandates and what needed to happen. Um, Recology, as you know, was the incumbent. They, they ultimately, when they provo- their proposal, they were the lowest cost. And the selection committee was of this two city managers, and the county CAO were the ones that ultimately created that recommendation for Recology, um, due to the program and due to the costs. Um, so that was that competitive procurement. Um, it was a long, and, uh, I, I don't think it was a very enjoyable one for the electives, but, um, I think it, it brought us to a place, um, to a very transparent, uh, of, and, and brought programs up to where we needed, uh, meet state mandates, because we were not meeting state mandates, um, for, uh, for, for our version programs. We're in a better position now. But again, I, I completely hear the council and the mayor on the concerns of the timing of this rate increase, even if it is a dollar or a dollar forty.
Right, and just again, so we're clear on, on the one thing, the statement that was made, of they have a reputation, or this is what they do once they get the contract. Please explain that whoever that contract was awarded to, it would have been the same deal, because that's how that franchise agreement was being worked out at the time before the choice was made.
That's correct, and, um, I, I know the general manager, Phil Kouchay, um, had, I believe, met with the speaker, because we had, we had talked about this in the past. They do not follow, uh, any other methodology, other than the methodology that's spelt out in the franchise agreement. Um, and the rates that they, excuse me, the, the, the costs that they proposed in their original proposal that when they submitted it, um, are, they are held to those costs. The challenges that we have at this time, um, not only Hollister and San Juan, but really the region... um, not only Hollister and San Juan, but really the region, is the cost of, of, uh, of this Chinese national board, where the contamination rate for recycling is, is high, and the processing costs are high. Uh, in prior years, some of these costs were able to be offset by recycling commodity value. Now, the cost of cardboard and aluminum, and many of these things have declined to such a state that it's, it's, it's more costly to do these collection programs, where we still have the same amount of trucks and bins. Um, we're not having that offset of the commodity value. So, a lot of factors are, 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 are going into this calculation. Um, so we wanted to add that. Hopefully Carl's I T problems have resolved, and he's able to join to answer any specific questions of, of the council.
Okay, Carl, you back?
Oh, my.
Okay.
Apparently they have not resolved.
Mayor, this is the city manager. I have a question for Kathleen, if I may.
Me as well. I have a quick question. Can this does go through?
I'm sorry, who's speaking and what?
This is Brett, Mayor. Then, one of my questions for Kathleen is, the main reason we had this on this agenda was because we needed forty-five days. If we move it to the first meeting in May, you're not gonna have enough, you're not gonna have the forty-five days that you require, correct?
Yes, that's correct, and, um, that, that's why we were trying to, uh, the Board of Supervisors is hearing the issue tomorrow, as is San Juan. Um, the forty-five days is to give, um, Hollister, uh, property owners time to, uh, to, to, to provide a protest. So, that's exactly right. We, we do need these forty-five days.
Okay, uh, that changes things. So, Mr. City Manager, so if we don't, there's no way we can put the issue out two weeks, is what you're saying, to allow for the public to be able to take part in the protest?
You would not be giving the, the public the forty-five days for the...
I'm having a hard time hearing him, but is that correct, Ms. Gallagher? If we do not approve this tonight, then you, we may be in breach of contract, is what you're stating? And you're not gonna have enough time to allow the public to protest the, the hike?
That's correct. Um, I, I, I want to, let me, if I could, answer the second part, uh, of, of your question. Um, the forty-five days pursuant to the Proposition two eighteen. Um, so that noticing requires forty-five days. So, the, the intent was for council to hear this issue this evening, and then Recology would be sending out these public notices to Hollister, uh, to Hollister businesses and residents to allow them time throughout that forty-five days to allow that, that June fifteenth, uh, public hearing. Um, the, so that's, that's not my timeline. It's us following the Proposition two eighteen requirement.
Would we still be able to hear this matter in two weeks and get a clear, a clearer, um, definition or answer from Recology? And still allow the public to protest and, and not have the city liable for breach of contract?
I would have to, I'm, I'm sorry, I would have to quickly look at, at the calendar. Um, I don't believe that that allows sufficient time for the Proposition two eighteen.
Correct. I believe we missed it by three days.
Timeline. Um, but I, 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 I want, I want certainly the council to hear that. Um, I would like, and I'm so sorry about the, the I T problems that Recology is having. Um, I would like them to respond to that question, because I can't speak for the general manager and the local controller, um, ab- about allowing some, some flexibility in time. Um, so I can't speak for Recology at this time, is, is my answer.
I didn't see the city manager's taking a test. Brett, do you have an answer on that?
Right.
Clear answer?
Uh, correct. By going to the May fourth meeting, we would miss it by three days, I believe.
Okay, you're muffled. We would miss it by three days?
Yeah, we would miss it by three days.
Okay, well, that changes things.
Okay.
May, may...
Well, thank you. Is there any, any other speakers?
Yes, please. Yes, please, Mayor.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Carol.
Oh, Carol. Go ahead, Carol.
I, you know, for the public. I wanna say no, but I don't wanna be in breach of contract. I just don't think it's good business for you to, we go into breach, breach of contract. This is one of those things where it's a, it's a tough decision for me. So, city manager, what's the ramifications of a breach of contract?
Yeah, it would be a lawsuit, and then they, I'd have to leave that over to the city attorney, what he thinks it could be.
What could be the possibility of?
Well, and I'm sorry, Councilmember Lenore, but to provide a full answer, that I think would require a closed session, which we obviously can't do this evening.
Okay. Uh, so, so...
Yeah, we can hear you.
Sorry, I don't know why my light cuts out after a, a while, but, um...
Speak quickly, Carl.
Oh.
I told him, speak quickly, you didn't listen.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something real quick on this? If, if this does pass, pass tonight, and they do end up sending out, um, the notice for the protests, if I could please get a copy of, um, the notice of the protest, and also the number of notices that they send out, so I can, 'cause they'll all be returned to me, and I need to figure out what fifty percent plus one is.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is, is this Christine, is that Christine speaking? I'm sorry, I can't tell.
Yes, please.
So, yes, Christine, the public notice is actually in the agenda packet, and that is the final notice that would be mailed out to Hollister Res...
Yeah, go ahead.
This is... May I know how many?
Um, yes, I, I, I've got that information, and it sounds like Carl is...
Ryan again.
Ryan again, but, um, Christine, I will, I, I don't want to, um, uh, the total would be, um, go, the total would be nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-two.
Nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-two.
So, fifty percent plus one would be four thousand nine hundred and eleven.
One more time?
So, for Hollister, these would, would, the public notices would be mailed out to nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-two sites. That would be including residential and businesses. These are property owners. And then the fifty percent plus one, which would equal the majority protest, would be four thousand nine hundred and eleven.
Thank you.
And I, I will email it to you also, Christine, just to be avowed. Um, I think we received in, in the ballpark of about a hundred and fifty-four protests last year.
Thank you.
I have another, I have another question. I have a question, just on the, the, the rule two eighteen. What happens when a thing fails? Is there a breach of contract, then?
So, the way Proposition two eighteen works, if, if the majority protest occurs, um, the ci, city council would not be allowed to raise, to, to authorize the, the rates. But if there was not a majority protest, the rates would go into the first.
But if there is a majority protest, then we're not in breach of contract, the city of Hollister.
I'm not an attorney, um, so I'm going to probably defer to, to, to the city attorney. Um, but if the majority protest works, is if that fifty percent plus one, which would be four thousand nine hundred and eleven...
Got it.
No. Um, the, that the city council would not raise, would, would not be authorized to, to raise rates. That's how that majority protest works. And this is in your agenda pack, in case you think about it later this evening, or the, those, that the entire process is in your agenda.
Oh, no, I read the process. I was just wondering about breach of contract if it fails. Thank you so, thank you so much, Kathleen.
Thank you.
One more time, Kathleen, is my light working?
Yes.
Yes, it is, Carl.
Quickly. Okay. Sorry, sorry about all the, uh, problems with this. I think I've...
Running quickly.
Kathy, if, if I'm correct, they can vote, uh, no at the Prop two eighteen, uh, hearing, or when the actual hearing happens, correct?
Carl, you, you cut out. I couldn't understand what you were saying.
They can both know at the two, two eighteen process.
Yes, their, their public comment of property, when they fill out the, uh, the speaker form, they would have to note, uh, they would have to note, uh, their address and, uh, parcel number. Um, and though city council would hear all, uh, they would have to be a property owner to be, uh, registered as a, as a, a protest letter.
But the council could still vote to not approve the rate, even if there wasn't a majority, correct?
No, I mean, not the way Proposition two eighteen works.
'Cause my thought is, we have some time to talk, city manager, and, and see what tr... out.
Can I ask? Carl, are you still there?
Yeah, I am.
It, it sounds like maybe you want a little more time, so we can work something else out. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Well, I, I would like to be able to actually talk through this more than just in a public forum and avoid, or, or push this off for a full year with no consideration.
Can I, can I recommend, maybe we have a special meeting for this item? It gives us the, the timeline we still need. I think the, uh, city manager mentioned that the next meeting would be, uh, short three days, or maybe we can do something before that, the week before. If that's a compromise for everyone.
I'm available whenever it works for you.
We will do some math.
How does that look to you, city manager?
Not a problem. We'll figure that out.
Okay.
Hang on.
Yeah, it would have to be next week.
It, it has to be next week, Ignacio.
Okay, if we can get a, a date, so we can make, maybe somebody can make a motion with that date certain, and have a special meeting for that. And we could, uh, go through that issue, and maybe get more information for all of us. And allow time for the city managers to work with Carl.
To, to give the...
I'm prepared to make that motion.
To, to, to give the public more time, I'd like to lean on the last day. So they have time to get notice and be, be able to, uh, comment. Thank you.
Yeah. The notice will still be in time. That, that's what, uh,
Yeah.
the city manager was pointing out.
What's the last day?
So. Yeah.
Next week is April twenty-seventh to May first.
What's the last day we can do it and still be in, in compliance with the schedule?
This will be three days short, so it would have to be the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth. I, um, okay. Are you looking for an action?
Yeah, I, I think if we can do that, it'll give Carl time to work with the city manager, and we can have a, a better resolution to this. If that works with you, Carl.
Before we end, I have some, um, teleconferencing that wanna have their hands raised, and another member of the public that would like to speak, please.
Okay. So, who is it?
Kevin Henderson, please.
Uh, given that there's some participants in Zoom, we're having a hard time, uh, participating. Um, I know Zoom offers a landline option, so please, uh, would suggest making that, um, as a backup for someone who can't participate with their P C and, and microphone. Thank you.
Good suggestion.
Okay, anything else? So...
Roxanne Stevens? Wait.
I, but I heard you say it's twenty-seventh.
Um, the twenty-eighth, but I have one more speaker, Roxanne Stevens. Give me just one moment.
Okay.
Roxanne, please go ahead.
Um, hi, this is Roxanne Stevens. So I wanted to speak on the G-PAC item.
Oh, that's not this item. I'll, I'll call you, I'll...
That's what my comment was to do. So that's why I was checking. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so there's, uh, the date of the twenty-eighth. It's somewhat like a motion to, uh, schedules, move this to a special meeting for the twenty-eighth?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm prepared to make a motion, um, to move Resolution number twenty twenty dash seventy-eight to a special meeting of a date certain on April twenty eighth.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone.
Can I ask for...
Thank you, Kathleen.
Can I ask for clarification on a time for the twenty-eighth?
Six o'clock?
That would be good.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to item three. Item S, S three?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, good evening. Abraham Prado, Development Services Department Planning Manager. Um, this item, a resolution, um, of the city council requesting approval of an annexation agreement for the nine-point-one-oh-three acre property at ten seventy-one A Vista Road, located north of A Vista Road, between Miller Road to the west and West Side Boulevard to the east, came before the council on March sixteenth, twenty twenty. At that time, council member Marjorie Richmond, may God rest his soul, was absent. Um, he had not passed yet. And the outcome of the item on that day was a two-to-two vote, and therefore, the item moved to the April sixth meeting. At the April sixth meeting, this item was, um, also at a tied two-to-two vote. Therefore, it is scheduled for tonight. And staff wanted to address the council and indicate that on April thirteenth, twenty twenty, the city of Hollister received correspondence via email from the property owner, Ms. Laurie, um, Ms. Laurie and Mr. Alan Woodall, indicating that at this time, they would like to withdraw the item until there is a full council on board. And so, therefore, at the request of the property owner, staff is recommending that this item be withdrawn. Please let us know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that we withdraw Resolution number twenty twenty dash seventy-nine.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Um, second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're gonna move to item F four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, this is Abraham Prado once again. And, um, this item also came before you on March sixteenth, and also on April sixth, and it was a tie vote, two-to-two. And the city received the same correspondence from the property owners, Mr. Alan Woodall and Ms. Laurie Woodall, to request that this item also be withdrawn from, uh, the council until a full council is seated. So therefore, um, per the request of the property owner, the staff is recommending withdrawal of this item. Are there any questions for staff?
Any questions from council?
No.
Is there any, any speaker cards on this one?
I have no speaker cards.
Is there a motion to withdraw?
I make a motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that we withdraw Resolution number twenty twenty dash eighty.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We're gonna move to item S five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, Abraham Prado with the Development Services Department. Um, Resolution number twenty twenty dash sixty-four approved at the regular city council meeting of April sixth, twenty twenty, approved the cancellation of all Hollister ad hoc committees, except for the, um, state of coun... Except for the, the Sester Council, as needed, and except for the General Plan Advisory Committee. So in the spirit of moving forward with the update of the general plan, the resolution before you, twenty twenty ta, dash eighty-one, would amend Resolution number twenty eighteen dash twenty-seven, that's attached as Exhibit A in your packet. Resolution number twenty eighteen dash twenty-seven was unanimously approved on February fifth, two thousand and eighteen, by the city council and created the framework for the General Plan Advisory Committee, otherwise known as the G-PAC. And so, as part of the framework, the city council agreed that the G, the G-PAC would consist of two members from the city council, two members from the City of Hollister Planning Commission, and one member from the City of Hollister Public, resident of the City of Hollister Member-at-Large. The approval of Resolution twenty twenty dash eighty-one this evening, if that is the desire of, of the city council, would maintain the five-member G-PAC formation. However, the main change or amendment being requested tonight is that to keep the consistency on how members of an ad hoc committee are appointed, per the final whereas in the resolution tonight before you, from now on, each time a vacancy occurs in the G-PAC, the city council will ratified by a general consensus... from now on, each time a vacancy occurs in the G-PAC, the city council will ratify by a general consensus as opposed to coming back before you with the resolution. So that is what the approval of tonight's resolution would do. In addition, staff's recommendation will be, when we get to the recommendation, and that would be shortly, but staff's recommendation would be that as a general consensus, the city council select David Hugh Boy and Roxanne Stevens as the two members to serve in the G-PAC, representing the City of Hollister Planning Commission. And two, as a general consensus, the city council selects Mr. Trevin W. Barber as a member of the public. The public notice for the recruitment of the volunteer G-PAC member was published on August sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and again on August twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, with the filing deadline of September fifth, two thousand and nineteen. And the City of Hollister received one application from Mr. Trevin W. Barber. Before making the formal recommendation this evening, staff would like to say a few words about the interested applicant requesting to be the member from the public in the G-PAC from Mr. Trevin W. Barber. If that's okay with the council, we would like to say a few words about him. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's okay, sir.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Trevin has a diverse background in public administration. He started his career working on political campaigns, but quickly developed an interest and heart for serving in a local government capacity. He started his public administration career in the finance department for the City of Lancaster, which is approximately three hundred miles southeast of Hollister, assisting with budget analysis, fiscal and economic impact reports, grant tracking, and bond issues. His knack for sales and promotion led him to a position with the Economic Development Department, where he worked on attracting North America's first Chinese vehicle manufacturer, BYD, to the City of Lancaster, as well as assisting local businesses. His background in finance helped immensely when crafting the Lancaster redevelopment agency's twelve million dollar long-range property management plan and winding down the affairs of the former agency. Trevin's most recent assignment before joining the City of Gilroy was in the city manager's office, where he used his knowledge of operations management to make a more perfect customer care program for Lancaster's new community choice aggregator, Lancaster Choice Energy, as well as Lancaster's Development Services Department. He also worked on special projects like integrating cannabis legalization into the city's municipal code and initiating a new predictive analytics program in partnership with Google X. Trevin received a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from the University of California, Santa Barbara, and a Master's of Public Administration from California State University, Bakersfield. As a member of the Pi Alpha Honor Society, Trevin is also an Eagle Scout with the Boy Scouts of America, a member of Morgan Hill Bible Church, the Gideon's International, and an active alumnus of the Alpha Gamma Omega Fraternity. More importantly, Trevin is a family man with two young children, ages four and two. He looks forward to spending time with his family, enjoying Monterey Bay, Santa Cruz Mountains, and Hollister Hills. I would also actually like to add that since the formation of the G-PAC's framework was approved on February fifth, two thousand and eighteen, Mr. Trevin Barber actually has been in contact with staff approximately every six to eight weeks, either calling or via email, just asking about the G-PAC and when that position would be open, expressing his interest. Therefore, for tonight, staff recommends that the city council, the City of Hollister, adopt Resolution Number twenty eighteen dash eighty-one. One, amending city council Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-seven to remove the names of the members from the City of Hollister Planning Commission to serve on the G-PAC ad hoc committee. And two, selecting the form of a general consensus, Planning Commissioner David Hugh Boy and Planning Commissioner Roxanne Stevens from the Planning Commission to serve in the G-PAC. And three, selecting the form of a consensus, Mr. Trevin W. Barber from the public, who is a resident of the City of Hollister, to serve in the G-PAC. Mr. Trevin Barber was contacted about this meeting, and he should be on the line in case there's any questions for Mr. Barber, and also Ms. Roxanne Stevens from the Planning Commission as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions from council?
Yes.
I do have some questions.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have questions. Thank you.
And so do I.
Okay, we'll start with, who was first?
I was first. I was first. Thank you.
Councilmember Lennar?
Yes, I have some questions.
Sure.
Can you tell me, when did we go out advertising for the Member-at-Large for the G-PAC? What did we, what publication did we utilize? How long was it? How many times was it run? If you have those dates now, because I'm struggling with only one applicant. Not anything to do with Mr. Barber. It's not a problem. I just wanted to know what we did.
Yes, August sixteenth and August twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen.
They were published in the freelance newspaper. And at the time, I actually had three applicants. Marty Richmond was one. Mary Paxton's husband?
Mark.
Mark.
Mark was the second, and Trevin was the third. So there was three applicants.
All really good applicants, yes.
Ay yi yi. I'm having a hard time because I like more selection. I would thought also too that we would interview maybe somebody that wants to be on the G-PAC. We interviewed for my position when I came on here. I'd like to know a little more, and I want a strong planner. And I have questions for somebody that's going to steer our general plan. I'm struggling with it, so I'll wait to hear what everybody else has to say. Thank you so much.
And Carol, he is on the line, ready to speak, so, yeah.
Thank you.
I do believe, maybe Abraham, you could clarify this. Didn't he go through interviews through your committee or something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so we did talk to him in various occasions. Throughout, we've been in contact with him throughout this process since the very initiation initiation of the General Plan Advisory Commission or Committee Framework. So since then, we've been in contact with him. He's actually been the one reaching out to us. And as of lately, when we were going to bring in this item before the city council, we were in contact with him. We did talk to him. We did provide, we did get all this information that we just shared from him before you, and he did indicate that he would be willing to be on the line in case there's any questions of him by the city council this evening.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next person, I believe, was Councilmember Resendez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just part of the clarification, Mr. Prado, you said that this was adopted in two thousand and eighteen, the process on how to form the G-PAC, is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Resendez. The framework of the G-PAC was adopted February fifth, two thousand and eighteen, actually, unanimously by the city council at that time.
Wonderful. And then just, I'm having a nice time there, Councilmember Lennar. She said that, how many times was it published? Did you guys say that it was published not once, but two times? Is that correct?
That is correct, Councilmember Resendez. It was published twice, one on August sixteen, two thousand and nineteen, and another time on August twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, and we had a deadline, filing application deadline of September fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Prado. Another question is, first, let me just thank you for providing such good detail in the process and how transparent and how fair it was, also on the the detail or in depth of qualification of the one person that we have for the Member-at-Large. Lastly, I just want to say, because I happen to be watching this process very closely because I was on the general plan. I believe so, I was appointed to the general plan advisory committee, anyhow.
No, when you were ad hoc.
Can you shed some light on the process which was taken to appoint Commissioner Roxanne Stevens? Because I happened to watch that, and I thought that that was, in my opinion, very, very fair, transparent. Can you shed some light as to what the commissioners did to appoint Roxanne Stevens for the G-PAC?
Absolutely, Councilmember Resendez. Yes, so on February fifth, two thousand and eighteen, the city council adopted two, or ratified, adopted a resolution ratifying two members of the planning commission. One of them was Commissioner David Hugh Boy, and the other was Commissioner Gabriel Torres. Commissioner Gabriel Torres's term ended in December of two thousand and eighteen, and he is no longer a planning commissioner. And so therefore, in April of two thousand and nineteen, the planning commission had an item on their old business, essentially requesting amongst themselves a member of the planning commission to be brought to the city council for ratification to take over Mr. Gabriel Torres's place from the G-PAC. And so when that occurred, at that time, it was Mr. David Hugh Boy who was the chair of the planning commission. And so his recommendation was that anybody who was interested from the five members present to essentially let the planning commission know. And so at that point, we had Mr. Kevin Henderson, who was interested in the, as, to be part of the general plan advisory committee, representing the planning commission, and we had Ms. Roxanne Stevens as well, who was interested in being part of the G-PAC. And so what Mr. David Hugh Boy, being the chair, did was he gave each member an opportunity to speak to the planning commissioners, to get their support of having a consensus or having a vote to be recommended to the city council for ratification. And so Mr. Henderson was given an opportunity to speak, and then also Ms. Roxanne Stevens was given an opportunity to speak. I forget who was first, and then the other spoke. And then at that time, then they all, all five planning commissioners who were present ended up putting a name on a piece of paper, and they provided it to staff. Staff then counted the name, the votes, and it was really close. And but Ms. Roxanne Stevens was the one that was chosen, which is why we are bringing her name before you this evening.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. My memory is drawing a little bit, so I just, I thought somebody had withdrew. Like, one of the persons had said they wanted to be an applicant, and they withdrew. It might have been another commissioner. But I just wanted you to shed some light on the process. And would you say in your professional opinion that it was a fair and transparent process to choose those members for the G-PAC?
From the planning commission, Mr. Resendez, I believe that that was the intent of the planning commission. And at that time, Mr. David Hugh Boy, as being the chair, I believe overall that was the intent, to have a fair, transparent election for recommendation to the city council for the member of the G-PAC. That is correct, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Prado.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Vice Mayor Spencer, I think you had a comment also?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have no problem with accepting David Hugh Boy and Roxanne Stevens as part of the G-PAC. However, I would really like us to republish applications. I don't like having just one person in the last week. I, well, since the agenda came out, I shouldn't say week, because everything's so crazy anymore. I've had several people of the community who did not know about this application process, and they are very, very interested in filling out an application. I would like to have the general public application be re-put out and have new applications put in. And I have no problem with Mr. Hugh Boy or Mrs. Stevens being on the G-PAC. But I definitely have a problem just voting for one person from the general public.
Okay, any other comments from council? Okay, so let me get my comment on this. You know, this has been a process that has taken much, much longer than it needed to be. This is a project I started bringing up back in, I think, two thousand and fifteen, if I'm correct, about the need to update the general plan. And there was one obstacle after another, after another, after another. We finally came to an agreement, as you heard earlier, in two thousand and eighteen, to get this thing moving. Those members were picked. The applications were put out for the public to be involved, and that's what had happened. Those that wanted to be involved put their names in, and here we are today, still. Almost two years, a year and a half later, still talking about this. So we need to move already on this. We're way behind on this general plan. And I want to just, I don't want to get into a situation where we're looking for a reason to take up more time again. We need to get this thing done sooner rather than later. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and also I believe Trevin is available to speak as well, if anyone is so inclined to hear him.
If there's any, anybody wants any questions of him, we can ask.
Okay, I'll do the speaker cards first then.
Thank you.
Elias Salinas?
Oh, no, can you believe that? I did, I forgot. So I would agree with Councilwoman or Vice Mayor, Honor Spencer, with regards to opening it up, reopening it up again to get some more public input. I didn't even know about this, and honestly, I don't read the freelance, so I don't know if that's the only media that must be, I guess it's only one source that can go out, and maybe that's the it. I don't know if maybe it should be published otherwise. We're in a big social media lifestyle right now that I would recommend that it be redone. I think we should republish it and be placed out on social media as well, so they can reach out to more people. Like I said, a lot of people don't read the freelance. I actually pick it off the driveway and put it into the recycling bin. I think that, I think also what, if you want to go on a public input, and I don't know how big a committee we want, but I would strongly suggest the possibility of each council member maybe appointing someone from the public in their district that represents different areas of the city, might be something that should be considered and taken into consideration the way it is now. I'm looking at the, if this is to pass today, I'm looking at a committee that actually has been or is more towards the percentage of that it's going to slow growth completely down instead of going forward. We already have an issue right now that we can be in a lawsuit with the state of California because we are low in housing. And right now, the members that I see on this committee is not going to push forward, but it only going to go towards the mayor's agenda of actually having no growth, and I'm really, really nervous about that. So I would ask that the council reconsider opening up the position for other people to apply and get out there people who are interested, and if all possible, each council member should have a public-appointed person from their district so that you can get a general view of the entire city and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, just to make a quick comment there. Perhaps you don't remember, but you had made many, many comments during these time periods at the city council about the general plan and our efforts to get moving on it. I remember quite clearly you being there, so you were absolutely aware of the process we were going through at the time. And it's saddening to think that we're going to hold up the general plan again because of the fear of, as you said, the mayor's view on this. This is something that was out in two thousand and eighteen. The conversation started in two thousand and fifteen, or maybe even fourteen, about moving this along. And unfortunately, at this point, our general plan is severely outdated, as everyone can agree with. And the public should not be punished by us not doing our work that we should have done way back in fifteen. And to say that it was out there in the public in two thousand and eighteen, when everybody did the right thing, filled out the applications the way we asked, there was no bias in any way, shape, or form, as was expressed by staff. It's a very fair process, and we need to move forward on this and not just look for reasons to stall this even more time. So thank you very much. Do we have any of the speakers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Kevin Henderson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. So, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you, this has been a very, um, long process. I, I believe it, it was well over a year ago that, uh, the Planning Commission had the meeting, uh, to decide, um, who the two Planning Commissioners were going to be on the, the G-PAC. Um, my recollection was that it was going to be, um, David Hughboy and Seth Munzer were the two original proposed, and then later Seth Munzer, um, thought that his, he wouldn't be able to dedicate the amount of time because of other interests. Um, so, it was at that time that myself and Roxanne put our, um, hat into the ring for consideration. We both gave presentations, um, and basically, everyone gave a, I guess, kind of a point score, maybe zero to five on everyone's presentation, and then, based on that, that was how the, uh, Roxanne, Commissioner Stevens was, uh, decided between myself and her. So, just thought I'd give that input. Um, also, I wanted to say that, um, I believe it was late twenty eighteen or early twenty nineteen, there was a resolution by City Council stating that the Planning Commission, Planning Commissioners would serve at the, the pleasure of the City Councilperson who appointed them. Um, I don't know how, I don't know when this, the G-PAC meetings are going to start, I don't know how long the process is going to take, um, but we potentially have an election that's going to happen in the middle of this process. Potentially, you could have members of this G-PAC who are going to be told that you're no longer on the, uh, Planning Commission. So, I just wanted to point to just make that known, remind you that that's also something you might want to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, Trevin, if you want to speak, would you raise your hand, because I do have a speaker's card for you?
Who's this?
Trevin, go ahead. Trevin Barber?
He's muted. Hi, this is Trevin, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Was there a specific question, or did you just want me to introduce myself?
No, there was no specific question, you just had your hand raised, so that's why they called him.
Well, I have a speaker's card for you, Trevin, so I wasn't sure if you needed to speak or wanted to speak.
Oh, no, I have no, no comment.
Okay.
Just available for questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back. Is there, that's the last speaker, is there a motion for this item?
I, I, I have one more.
Wait, I have one more hand raised, I have one more hand raised, please, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Maria Casey?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, hi, thank you for letting me speak this evening. I'll make it real quick, I just want to echo what Elias Salinas said, you know, I, I was unaware either of the, uh, citizen representation coming back, and I know that it was published in the Freelance from what you're saying, but there are folks that don't read the Freelance. It would have been nice if it had been out there, there's a lot of social media where people talk about what's going on, and it just would have been nicer if it had more, more options for being discovered. And I, I also believe that, you know, this is a really important document and should have as much input from people and have as many views reflected as it can. Um, I'm also in favor of the idea of having one citizen from each district be a part of, I, I would think that, you know, it would give a broader perspective instead of just one citizen member. So, I just wanted to, uh, reiterate what she was saying, that I agree with that, and I would love to see more applicants, you know, there's been a lot that's changed since two thousand and eighteen as far as people's awareness, um, around land use and growth and planning, and I think there are a lot of people who are very interested in.
Thank you very much.
Did we have, uh?
I'd, I'd like to speak, please.
I think we had, wasn't, didn't, uh, Ms. Stevens have, make a comment earlier? Was that correct, Christine?
Um, yes. Roxanne, did you want to speak? And I, and also, um, Maria, I have you and Bill Lee for G three for the next item.
Yes, this is Roxanne Stevens, I would like to speak if you're a regular.
Go ahead.
All right, go ahead.
So, thank you, um, for allowing me to give up a brief little comment. I just, I, I want to just raise, um, my main concern on this item, and it's just simply another delay in the process because I am worried too that it's just been a really, really long process, there's been a lot of setbacks, uh, part of it was out of, you know, the, the control of anybody who's participating, including some of the delays that happened during the, um, the request for proposals and the contracting, so there was some things that happened that were out of everybody's control, but it has been a long, drawn-out process, and I'd like to ask that we just do whatever we can to move forward on this process. I was really, um, uh, uh, humbled by the support from my former, my fellow Planning Commissioners to appoint me to this, um, to this group, uh, because I think it's a really important group, and I think that part of the reason why, um, I, I was so interested in, and part of what I said when I gave my presentation was, my goal in participating in this community was to really listen to the, to the community, to not bring any of my own personal, um, interests or any, um, perceived biases that I may have, but really about how to bring, um, uh, a voice to the community, especially, uh, Spanish-speaking community, I wanted to make sure that somebody that was on that advisory group could speak Spanish, I am bilingual, so I want to make sure that we had somebody on there that could listen directly to what people were saying, um, if they were coming forward and speaking in Spanish, or if they are from the Spanish-speaking only community. I also, um, wanted to, um, do my best to bring conciliatory, a conciliatory tone to the group, I'm hoping that this process happens in a way that's really methodical, where people have an opportunity to speak, where we can talk about vision for the city, we can talk about what are the primary goals, and to have those goals be really clear and, and specific, um, and so that when we move forward, we're clear on the plans that we're making for the city at large. So, that was part of what I gave, said in my speech to, um, my fellow commissioners, and, um, I would like to bring that to, to this group. Um, having said that, whatever the decision that we forward, I obvi- respect that, um, in whichever way that I'm able to, but I just ask that we, we just don't delay this process longer. I agree, we have to have as much community input as possible and as much community, community participation as possible, so we have to find every way that we can to make sure that happens through this process as well. So, whatever that means, I'm for it, because we have to have the voice of the community know on that committee, be, um, be, um, sole, like, sole voice for the plan, voice should be a presentation of what the community wants. I fully, fully support that. So, that's all I wanted to say. So, and thank you, Honor, for your support, I really appreciate that.
You're welcome, Roxanne.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, no more speakers? All right. Is there a motion?
There's a comment right here, I've been asking and waiting, thank you very much.
Say who, I'm sorry?
Carol Lenore would like to speak again.
Okay, go ahead.
There's no delay, folks. It wasn't publicized well enough, it's old, and I do not like having been handcuffed from a two thousand and eighteen, uh, resolution, uh, considering that we're just starting the general plan now, here's what, here's what I would like to see. First of all, that G-PAC committee is too little, it's too little, you need seven to nine, you don't need five people, that's, you're losing all your voice when you have five people. You should have one member from each Councilmember and a three at large, at a minimum, that's how you get a good, clear picture of the whole city, not just the no-growth side. You're, you're painting yourself into a corner, you need more people, not less. So, I got to tell you, I'm not going to support this, and it's not a delay, we need to restructure the G-PAC committee to be more fair. The Mayor's on there, his, his Planning Commissioner is on there, my Planning Commissioner didn't get selected, that's okay, but we're going to have to balance it out a little bit, um, and I need more people to select from, uh, so I'm not going to support this G-PAC, we have the power to change it, to make it more better, more representative of the city, to give people that other chance to apply, and then if they don't, they don't, but nobody knew about it, that's the theory, that's the feeling I'm getting, I'm not selecting from one person. Thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Got a comment, turn.
Go ahead, Councilmember Resendez.
Thank you, um, just want to remind everybody again, just reiterate, that this process started taking place in two thousand and eighteen. I have been watching the whole time, I tuned in, I watched how the Member of March was chosen, I watched how the Planning Commissioners were chosen, I think that it seems highly political, and I think it seems very strategic, and if you care so much, then why weren't you involved back then? I think it's a major slap in the face to the staff, to the applicant, and I don't know if we'll get somebody that is as qualified as Mr. Barber, that's the truth of the matter. And for somebody who was appointed to the City Council because they're qualified in planning.
Oh, there we go, there we go, there we go. Okay.
To not adopt new proposal, because we're going to be left with less people than what, what we're originally asking for, not more people. So, I just don't see how it makes any logical sense to stall this or try to stop it anymore. As well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, I'll reply to Roland, I'll reply to Roland, please. Roland, in case you don't know, I was on the Planning Commission for six years, so I was involved, maybe, maybe you don't get that, and bringing up that I'm appointed really is a lack of class. I was appointed, I followed the structure the way that the city set it out, I applied for the job, that's all. You wouldn't be saying that to somebody, and if they were agreeing with you, but since I'm disagreeing with you, go ahead and take that shot of appointment, but you know what? I'm still on here with you, and I still have the same power. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, okay. So, let's just go back, and, you know, both of you have brought up good points, and I think you, you just brought up a point right now, Councilmember Lenore, you were appointed to that position by a group of people, and these others were appointed by their group. Now, I mentioned earlier, this is something I thought was important way back, two thousand and fifteen, I'm thinking even fourteen, fifteen at least, about the importance of updating the general plan, and year after year after year after year, there's been another reason not to do it, and another excuse not to do it, a dislike for a person or a dislike for a vision. You know, we can't keep doing the same thing and keep making new excuses. I mentioned earlier, uh, one of the speakers said they had no idea about this, well, no, they were there the whole time, I remember comments over and over by that same person about the general plan and everything else, so that's not correct. These people took their time to apply, followed the rules, those around them chose them as their representatives for this Planning Commission. The people expect us to get this done, and to find ways to stall it again, it's just not right for the public, and we need to move forward, and I don't think this should be a political thing, this is, again, something that was started and approved to move forward in two thousand and eighteen, it was started earlier, and here we are, still looking for ways to change the people on these that applied and followed the rules. It's time to get past that, make a decision so we can start on this. Our general plan is going to be over fifteen years old by the time this thing is done. These are some of the reasons we're having issues in our community, and I've said before, and I'm going to keep saying, we should not be approving any projects anymore until we get this general plan done because it is so outdated, it's not serving our community well, and the sooner we get started on it, the sooner we can get there, and it might, there might be a few people that see it differently, but you'd be surprised what happens when a community comes together and they work together, and I totally have faith in all of these applicants, I have faith in our community to do it right, because that is what's going to happen, we're going to have the community involved, and to delay it again is not fair to this community. So, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I would, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Councilman Spencer.
Okay, um, you keep talking about applicants, uh, we have one to choose from right now, unfortunately, one of the applicants has passed away, God rest his soul, the other one moved away. When there was only one left, it should have been reopened again, re-advertised for more applicants. We are not saying that we don't want Hughboy or Roxanne Stevens, what we're saying, and we're not trying to stall this anymore, we want more people from the public, from our community, to put in their applications. You talk about people want us to move forward, they do, but they also want to be a part of the process. By you not allowing any more applications to be looked at, you are blocking, you are blocking out our community members who are now very active and they want to be part of this process. I am just asking for one thing, reopen it up, get more applications, we can do this in about three weeks, we can have this done by the end of May at the very last council meeting.
You're not stopping anything.
And we will have more applicants, I can guarantee you that. You want to be, you, you talk about you, the public, you don't listen to the, all the public, you listen to your public. There's a lot more people in this community that have a voice, and I think you need to start listening to them. Thank you.
Thank you, but, thank you, but we're not going to go round and round on this again. Is there a motion on this item, so we can move forward, please? On Resolution Number twenty twenty dash eighty-one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty dash eighty-one.
Is there a motion, is there a second? I will second your motion. All in favor? Or maybe, well, let's have a roll call vote on this, seeing if it's sort of clear.
Give me just one second. Councilmember Spencer?
No.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lenore?
No.
Okay, motion does not carry. Does that move us over to the Commissioner committees by consensus? Or not? Can I get clarification on that?
I'm not sure, the question, Mayor?
The other two items were the selection of from the Planning Commission and for the one applicant. Does that not go through because this was not approved, or what happens next?
You can just split it up.
No, it's not a motion.
That was by consensus.
Abraham, how does your resolution read? What are you requesting?
Yes, um, so, if the resolution were to be approved, then, then the resolution would authorize the City Council to be able to appoint or select by consensus, rather than coming back to, um, to with another resolution.
Each time there's an opening from the Planning Commission.
Yes.
That's not a problem.
Correct, so.
Got it.
But not the other one.
Okay, thank you very much, so that does not pass, we're going to move to item G one?
So, I'm sorry, if it doesn't pass, that leaves, um, twenty eighteen, twenty-seven in effect, which, by the way, is David Hughboy and Gabriel Torres, who's no longer on the Planning Commission.
They selected Roxanne.
David Hugh Boy would still be on the committee.
But you didn't pass the resolution.
No, the, from the 2018 one that was passed. He was approved on that one.
So the G-PAC is not formed yet. The planning commission ratified their appointments. That's not a problem. That was a fair process. We're objecting to the member at large.
So, so with that, the G-PAC is not formed yet? We'll still, we'll still have to go out and select them, or put it out for advertisement?
But if you don't, if you do not adopt this-
I'm hearing confusion here. The members of the planning commission were not approved because this resolution did not pass.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay?
We could fix it.
That's correct.
Okay, now, Mr. Hugh Boy in the past was approved previously in 2018. So his name is actually, he is actually an approved member of this committee.
He doesn't have a council member.
Yeah, so we're clear on this. Any other questions on this as we move on?
I like David Hugh Boy.
Say, I'm sorry, I did not hear that.
I like David Hugh Boy for anything planning.
Okay, that's great. But he's still on the committee, all right? But at this point, Roxanne Stevens cannot be put on because this resolution was not passed. Are we all clear on that?
That wasn't my intent. But if that's what it is, that's what it is. But that wasn't my goal.
Yeah, that's, so you're all clear. That's what happened with your decision, okay?
Oh, okay, thank you for clarifying that for me.
G1, reports from city council members regarding their committees. Councilmember Lenore?
We had no, I have no committee reports. The Ambag was canceled, yes.
Vice Mayor Spencer?
I had a meeting this, last week with M-Bard. We discussed some new electric vehicles that will be reaching us Monterey County via a grant. We also discussed hiring and a few other things. And that's about all I have for meetings.
Thank you. Councilmember Resendez?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
And nothing to report this time. We're gonna move to informational reports from city council.
Yes.
Councilmember Lenore?
Yes, I have a few items that I wanted to run by you folks. The first item I'd like to start with, and I realize the ad hoc committee for downtown revitalization has, has been postponed, that's not a problem. But I have to tell you, there is a couple of things that we could do for downtown that I think as a council, we could discuss and, and maybe agree. So I'd like to propose that the city manager please agendaize for whenever he has time ASAP. But, you know, I know, but he's busy, okay? I would like a discussion item for signal light, not signaling, stop signs at Sixth and Seventh at San Benito Street. So I have several businesses that keep bringing that up. And I promised from the last business forum that I would bring it up to the council. But we were planning on doing it through the ad hoc, Marty and I. So now that's on, I really think that we could help downtown and give them their wishes and add those two stop signs if engineering does their evaluation and they think it'll work, I would like to bring that to the downtown. My second item also relates to downtown. I would wondered if the mayor would agree to maybe direct the planning commission to once again broach the subject of outside seating in a parklet. When I was on the planning commission, we actually got to where the Farmhouse Cafe was gonna do one, but they had to stop for personal reasons. I'd like to put some planning in place for parklets. Get some criteria and some guidelines for them. Planning commission staff can be working on it and bring it to the council so that we can start doing something to help downtown and, and bring a little liveliness downtown. It all has to work, though, so there's many things to discuss. And I think engineering plays an integral role in that subject. My, my third item to this evening is I would like to offer my assistance to District Four residents. I had actually discussed with Marty when he was ill. I say, hey Marty, you want me to offer my help? He said, sure. And then he passed away. So I just wanna also tell you, if you have day-to-day business that you'd like some help with, please feel comfortable to call me. I'm, I'm actually kinda good at it. My fourth item, I'd like to wish the community well. This is very difficult on all of us, and I'm really missing you folks. I'm a people person. I just want pollsters to know that I love you, and I really pray for downtown, and that we're gonna be able to bring it back. You're very special to me. I'll work with you in any way I can. My fifth item tonight is I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for my mask. I'm not wearing it because you can't hear me. That's not, I don't say that too often. But I got this beautiful mask from the Chamber of Commerce through a generous donation of the city in the San Benito County. And I made a little donation, but they are free. So folks, please, get one. They're really cute, too. And I thank the ladies that are making them very much. My sixth item tonight is I just wanna make a comment regarding construction. It's been an issue in the paper. And just briefly, I can't wrap my head around the fact how you can make an affordable housing construction site okay to work in, but you can't do market rate. So it either works or it doesn't. Really shouldn't have any bearing on market or affordable, even though I do want affordable. But the argument that you can make affordable somehow safe, but market rate you cannot just doesn't float with me. So I'm gonna tell you that. Number seven, I'd really like staff to please do something with the gentleman that's camped out on Dunn Park. I've been waiting for him to go away, but it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger. We have a cart ordinance. I don't like the carts. I don't want the tarp. All the, if he wants to, and you know what? You're not even supposed to sleep in parks at night. There should open at dusk, dawn, and close at dusk. We gotta do something there. I don't care what it is, but let's get something done. He's been there too long, and it's a big thing now. My eighth item tonight is I would so much like to thank Thousand Trails for sheltering in place RVers, mostly seniors, at the San Benito Preserve, all of the preserves. They stepped up in a big way. So folks rolled in, they were allowed to extend their reservations, three, four weeks, whatever it was gonna take to keep those seniors safe. I gotta tell you, Thousand Trails stepped up in a big way for this community. That park is full, full. I've never seen it that full. They're doing a great job out there. My last item, and I know everybody's gonna agree with me. Holy cow, what's with all the speeding? I can't even work in my yard. It's like the rally's going on. The roller cycles are even maybe better than that. Holy cow, I don't know what's going on, but all the wackos came out. And all your little hot rod cars. I'm gonna put it on the police department through my city manager. We better get some enforcement going on Fourth Street, San Benito Street, and probably all the streets. It's out of control, and I'm not gonna take it. Thank you so much for listening to me this evening.
Okay, Vice Mayor Spencer?
Yes, I just wanna cover on some things that are happening in our community. Sometime this week, the county of San Benito will impose a mandate for residents to have face coverings. It will follow an executive order that Fremont and other Northern California cities and counties are doing. What this means for us is this order requires face coverings to be worn at all essential businesses to help prevent the further spread of COVID-19. It does not state the words "public places like" or punishable by six months in jail and/or a fine up to $1,000. There could be a fine of 100, however, this is an administrative regulation. As you all know, on April 10th, 2020, an ordinance was brought before the city council trying to oppose the same restrictions. However, that ordinance and the way it was worded was very ambiguous. I also found it very hard to impose a fine and/or jail time on any person. This executive order from the San Benito County Health Department has addressed those concerns, and I do support this order for many reasons. One, this order covers all of San Benito County. The one that the city looked at just covered the city. This order is coming from the experts that work for our health department, who I may add are the only ones that should be bringing forth any type of restrictions and/or orders that arise from a health crisis in our community. Three, the word misdemeanor, misdemeanor equals six months in jail and/or up to a $1,000 fine. It's also a crime, and it is on your record. But this has been replaced with the word citation and a $100 fine. For those facing a conviction, the difference between a citation, fraction, infraction, and a misdemeanor are significant, and you can never judge human emotions. So, we will be required to wear face coverings when going into essential businesses. Grocery stores, pharmacies, gas station. The key words here are essential businesses. You can go out of your home and take a walk, a run, and be in public without having to wear any face coverings. We have the free will to make our own choices. I choose to wear a face covering when going into an essential business. I choose not to wear a face covering when I am out walking or running. And there are others that feel the same way. Please, please, community, I'm begging you. Do not shame anyone on social media, media, who chooses not to wear a face covering while out getting exercise and fresh air. It is not mandated. Second thing, I would like to, it has been brought to my attention that the senior citizens' new complex over on West Side Boulevard, these people are on strict incomes, low income and everything else, and their basic cable rates are $100 a month. I think that's outrageous. Is there any way we can look into that? Are we allowed to look into something like that?
Senior discount.
That's what I'm thinking. But the basic cable rate, right now, for anybody living in that new senior citizen complex is $100 a month. And I think that's all I have for, for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Resendez?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. I, oh, I do wanna ask staff, you know, we look at our, I know our budget's coming up. But I wanna make sure where we're at with the, how we're doing with our spending on the council. I know we haven't looked at it in a few years, but I wanted to take a look at that. And again, it's good we're gonna be having a face mask requirement finally. As I've said over and over and over again, it's one of the critical parts of what we need to do to get our businesses open again. Something I have been pushing for for several weeks. As you all know, it is not a requirement to wear it when you're outside taking a walk. It is not a requirement to wear it in your house, in your car, only when you're gonna be at work. Or again, as was mentioned, in a public place such as a store. The idea of the misinformation as far as people were gonna be fined is absolutely false. I wanna make sure everybody understands that. Nobody's looking to find anybody not wearing a mask or a face cover in public. So please, help us all by covering up. We're making a big difference out there. I'm proud to see so many of you doing it already and have been doing it. So you guys were the leaders, and I can't thank you all enough for being involved in it early on and not waiting for different rules to have to go into effect. So thank you again. Okay, city attorney or city manager?
Yes, I just wanted to thank our staff that just continue to do a great job during this pandemic. And then also, speaking of our great staff, you will, citizens, you will be seeing our staff going out and cleaning up sand walls and weed, doing weed control. This is more of a safety item. With all the recent rains, the weeds will grow more than they, than normal. And then, which leads to rodent infestations, so we wanna take care of that and any fire danger. So I just wanna let everybody know that that'll be happening shortly. But staff will be wearing all proper protection to do the job and to social distance.
Okay, city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No statement.
Okay, city clerk?
I just wanted to let council know that I was going to have on tonight's meeting the resolution to fill the vacancy via election, to call for a general municipal election, and then to request the consolidated general municipal election. But I was unable to get that on tonight's, so I'm shooting for May 4th for that. Thank you. And I apologize.
Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're gonna move to item three. The appointment to the general plan, I'm gonna appoint Councilmember Resendez to that G-PAC committee. And that is it. Any questions?
Nope, nope, that's not it. Nope, nope.
Speaker cards on that item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two speaker cards.
Go ahead.
Maria Casey? Maria, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. I have a question. I, first, before I speak, I just wanted to know, I thought there was more than one city council members to sit on the committee? So is there one already or not?
Yeah, the mayor.
There is gonna be one. There will be two council members.
So you, at this point in time, you're just talking about one? Or are you talking about filling the other position?
No, I'm already, I'm one of the members of that committee.
Okay, gotcha. All right. So with regard to that appointment, it's really important to have a, a balance of perspectives. And my understanding, well, and just from, you know, hearing things that you've said, Mayor, you, you are, you know, kind of anti-growth, and I would like to see a variety of perspectives.
That's incorrect. Let me just make sure you're clear on that. That's incorrect. But go ahead.
All right. I think that both Councilwoman Lenore and Spencer would be great choices. But given that Councilwoman Lenore's tenure is coming to an end, I believe that Councilwoman Spencer would be a good addition to the G-PAC and would balance perspectives. So I urge the council to appoint her.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Lee? Bill, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor and, and council, yeah, the, the G-PAC's really important for our community. Really, really important. I know you guys wanna get this going, and I, and I do agree that it needs to get moving. But doing it right is far more important because it has such major implications on the entire future, really in our lifespan. I really would encourage you to get a variety of people onto the G-PAC committee. I think the idea of having every council member appoint a citizen out of their district is a great idea to create some diversity. Obviously, there's diversity of opinion in the council, and that's good, and that's healthy, that you guys don't always agree on everything. I do think I, Mia just commented, you know, that Vice Mayor Spencer would, would be a good choice to represent the council. I think having both the mayor and the vice mayor would be a good move. And I realize you may have already made your decision, and, and if it is, so be it. But I, I do think that the, and I just wanna encourage publicly that the more diversity that you can create, the better thought-out you're gonna get for a general plan. You're gonna have more ideas floated in the room. And just 'cause the ideas are floated doesn't mean you have to take them. But by having those ideas in there, you create that inclusion for the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments. I think we, we had a-
I'm sorry, I do have one more speaker, Mr. Mayor. I have Elia Salinas.
Go ahead.
Elia Salinas would like to speak on this.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to agree with both Mia Casey and with Bill Lee with regards to having perspect, different perspectives. It's common knowledge, and it cannot be denied, that both you and Councilman Resendez seem to align when it comes to this council on decisions. And I think it's in the best interest of the entire community for you to go ahead and appoint yourself and Vice Mayor Honor Spencer would be a great idea. It would definitely open it up, and it would be very transparent. That's what you're always talking about, is you wanna be transparent. Well, here's your opportunity to be transparent, to make sure that the opinions, different sides of opinions are going to be considered. And it would be, like I said, in the best interest to appoint- um, to appoint, um, councilwoman Honor Spencer along with you, or if you choose not to be on it, you may do so and go ahead and you can, uh, appoint Roland Resendez. But, uh, the both of you being on it and aligning yourselves in the same ideas, same viewpoints. We know every time we come up here, we've come before you with different housing projects and different things, you both are, are always on the same page. So being transparent and showing the public that you're open to different viewpoints, then I strongly recommend that you go ahead and you choose Vice Mayor Honor Spencer. Thank you.
Is there any other speakers?
I have no more speaker cards, and I have no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. So, yeah, exactly right. We wanna be transparent. I want somebody that's transparent and listens to the community, and my choice is council member Resendez for this position.
No, no, you have to ratify by consensus. This is not an appointment just by you. And we are not giving Marty Richmond's seat. Uh-uh, uh-uh. I don't care. I can go louder. We're not, we're not giving Marty Richmond's seat to Roland Resendez. Ratify by consensus. You do not have a consensus. You're not ending this on your tone. You do not have a consensus.
Hang on a second. Let's go, let's go through this again. I get to choose who that person is as mayor?
No, you don't.
And?
No, you don't. Ratify by consensus. You are not the consensus. You are not the consensus. There's four, it's not your decision. Nope, 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 no, you're not. We're not giving Marty Richmond's seat to Roland Resendez. You have to go by consensus. You don't have a consensus. Can I have the interpretation, please? I will seek, I just did. Now we're gonna seek the advice of the city attorney. Thank you.
City attorney, can you please explain?
I'm gonna request, um, that, that we take, I realize it's very late, a two-minute break. I'd like to have a conversation with someone just real briefly in private, and then perhaps we could come back? Would that be allowable to the council?
Thank you, sir. Go ahead and take a two-minute break.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.